Columbus, Georgia. This is your City Council. Mayor Teresa Tomlinson. City Manager Isaiah Hughley. Pop Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem, and District 4. Mike Baker, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Tom Buck, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. Skip Henderson, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Tiny Washington, Clerk of Counsel. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your City Council.
Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the March 8th meeting of the Columbus City Council. We're so glad to have you with us here today. We have plenty of work to do. We're going to be here for a while, but it's all good. As I say all the time, it's your government at work, so I think we'll make you proud today. We're going to go ahead and get started with our invocation as we do each time we come together. And today, we have Reggie Williams, Reverend Reggie Williams of South Columbus United Methodist Church, who's going to come and bring the invocation consistent with his faith tradition. Reverend Williams, it's so good to see you.
Good morning, Mayor. It's good to see you, Council, City Manager. I must say, I really liked that intro.
Yeah, I know. It's kind of sharp, isn't it?
I serve as a pastor and know how much people pull on my time, all of the time, and how, you know, my life is not my own. And when I think about people like yourself who represent us, represent people in this city, your life is not your own. I see you on the weekends in various places, and I'm thinking, boy, they probably would love to be home with their families. But you serve, and you are giving of yourself, and we appreciate that. And I know each of you has the best interests of this city at heart. You may disagree on how to go about achieving that. So my prayer today is that the Holy Spirit would lead and guide you and guide us all as we conference together. Let us pray. Father, thank you for giving us such a wonderful city and great leaders. Lord, we pray now for the presence of your Spirit in this place, that as these leaders get together and they talk, and as other members of the sitinuary here in Columbus come together and present their proposals and everything that's related to what they want to see, we ask for your leadership, we ask for your guidance, we ask for civility, and that we keep the big picture in mind, that we're here to serve those who may not have a voice or whose voice may be very small. May we ever be mindful of that, and let there be a spirit of unity in this place. We thank you for it now in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, and thank you for what you and Saint and South Columbus United Methodist Church does for this city. We appreciate you greatly. Well, we were supposed to have some helpers this morning, but I think we can muddle through the Pledge of Allegiance on our own if you all would stand and join with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And with that, we'll go ahead and call forward the Hospital Authority of Columbus. They have plans for a skilled nursing facility. We have, it looks like Ken Henson, Counsel for the Hospital Authority, Britt Hayes, Vice President, and others. Britt, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Mayor and Counselors, for allowing me to come and talk a little bit about our future plans. I don't want to start too far back, but 1971, we built what is now known as Muskogee Manor Center. It's out on Chetoga Road, and it's been a really good facility for our community for getting close to 50 years. It was our long-range plan for our Board of Directors to secure a piece of property and try to build a replacement center for that facility over a decade ago. 2004, we bought a 27-acre parcel off of Williams Road at the corner of Williams and Whitesville where we built our facility, which is Orchard View, that some of you came out for the holiday feast that we had this Christmas and were very, very thankful to see some friendly faces out there and hope that you guys got to see some of our citizens and residents that were out there. I know Mr. City Manager came out there, and as he was going around, I was touring with him, he knew as many residents as I did. I took my name badge off myself and put it on him and asked him to just clock in because of all the fine folk that he knew from church and the community. So very grateful for that. But when, in 2004, when we bought that property, it was our long-range plan to try to get a better facility for citizens of Muskogee County. Subsequent to that, we reached agreements with Columbus Regional Hospital to purchase Azalea Trace and Hamilton House, two of their skilled nursing facilities here in town. And when we purchased those, we purchased the certificate of need or just the beds. They had no desire to sell us the bricks and mortar or the real estate that they were in. So we were tasked with trying to come up with a facility for those two entities. It worked out perfect with the, one of the transactions, because where we were thinking, what were we going to do with the old Muskogee Manor building? It looked like it would fold in seamlessly, the Hamilton House residents into that facility. And there was some mixture. Some of the residents at Muskogee Manor wanted to come to the new facility, and some geographically wanted to stay there. And similarly with Hamilton House, that occurred as well. So we were able to complete that transaction. Our new facility opened last year, and it's a really exciting time for us. We're faced now with Azalea Trace eminently closing. We have to come up with a new facility for those residents. There are 110 beds there and darn near 110 residents in those beds that we have to find a good place for. That's why we're coming to council and respectfully asking to do another bond issuance. We did a bond issuance in 1989 for $5 million or so, and we did a refinancing of that in '93 where the city very generously backed our bonds. We came to council similarly as I'm doing now in 2011 with the hopes of building the Orchard View property. Council graciously agreed to back those bonds. We were able to get a very favorable rate, and we did our bond issuance of $35 million in 2013. This won't be as large of a bond issuance. I did note that we have 110 beds at Azalea Trace right now. What we're going to, or anticipating building, we secured some land sort of behind the Franciscan Woods property. We bought 56 acres there. And we're going to initially, on Phase 1, build 84 beds, skilled nursing beds. We'll have rehabilitation services there as we do in our other entities. And perhaps a Phase 2 later on. We have the land available to expand if we need to in future years. But it just, it's a time that we have to do it. Our lease is going to expire next year with Azalea Trace, so we moved forward with trying to go, conceptually, with architectural plans to see how much a facility like that would cost. We're asking if City Council would back a bond issuance of up to $25 million. We'll probably be able to secure something less, but we don't want to have to come back in a later date and ask for additional funds. So that's what we're asking right now, and if you have any questions of our organization, we'd love to talk.
Clifton, why is this not on your agenda? I mean, is it just a courtesy? Which is fine, because isn't it, will council have to, is it a resolution or ordinance?
We'll have a formal resolution later, soon, Britt.
Okay. So do we not vote today? Or, okay, so this is just sort of an update?
Yes, ma'am. We just wanted to, you know, I called Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge last week or so just to apprise her that, you know, we'd like to come to council and just wanted to make sure everybody knew what our plans were and just ask him for help.
Okay. Let's see, we've got Counselor Baker.
Mayor, are these revenue bonds, general obligations? What's the category of these?
They are revenue bonds, aren't they?
Are they revenue bonds? Revenue bonds?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Looks like that's it, Britt. If somebody gets a question, I'm sure they can give you a buzz. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you being here. All right, we've got minutes from our December 15th, January 12th, and 26th meeting, as well as February 9th executive session. We've got a motion from the Mayor Pro Tem to receive the minutes. Is there a second?
Sir.
All right. Any additions or changes or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now we will head into the City Attorney's Agenda. Mr. Fay.
Thank you, Mayor. First item up is zoning at 8692 Veterans Parkway. This is a public hearing. The owner is Linda Cook. Petitioner here this morning. Okay, let's see if, no, it's on for a vote, so hang on just a second. We'll get a motion for adoption would be in order.
Got a motion in second for approval. Is there any discussion or questions? Okay, we will queue it to vote. One moment, please. All right, please indicate your votes electronically. All right, and it passes.
All right, item two on our agenda. Thank you for being here, sir. Item two is a text amendment. Mr. Jones, I understand we want to delay that matter. Can we get a motion from council to delay the text amendment?
Got a motion from the Mayor Pro Tem to delay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please state aye.
Okay, we'll bring that back when planning is ready. Next item, we've got some public zoning hearings. This is 6059, 6073, going from RO to general commercial. Owner Cottle Properties, retail office and restaurant. I think Counselor Henderson wants to make just one announcement. Although he does not have a financial interest in the property itself.
Sure.
Yes, I thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to disclose and acknowledge that the company I work for is going to be leasing one of these buildings on this property, but it's a leasehold estate. It is not any ownership. There's no financial benefit to me or my company, so unless there's a request from somebody, I'm not planning to abstain in the vote.
I don't think an abstention would be required, certainly.
No, it would not be. All right, is the petitioner here on Cottle? All right, anybody want to speak in the audience? Anybody for or against? All right, we'll bring that back next week at the nine o'clock meeting for a vote. Appreciate y'all being here. Item four is a zoning at Williams Road, 3603. This is part of the Columbus Botanical Gardens, Inc., going from single-family residential to residential office. Recommended approval. Mr. McKenna's here. Are there any questions from council? All right, anybody else want to be heard? Okay, we'll bring that back next week for a vote. And then item five is a companion ordinance. This is owned, property owned by the city, going from SFR 1 to RO in conjunction with the Botanical Garden. Mr. Jones is here, of course. Any questions?
Mr. Jones, in reading the staff report on this one, I noticed that there were some objections that had been raised to this. Can you speak to that?
Counselor Thomas, give me just a second. I'm trying to catch up here with you on that one. I think more in terms of lines, what I recall hearing is about what they had planned for the area and just in general, the operation of the, around, around the surrounding property itself with the, particularly those neighborhoods to the east. There's always been a point of contention when anything that gets developed out there along Williams and then, of course, on Whittlesby itself. But that's more of a contention, I think, than anything else in terms of that. Plus, we've always had concerns about parking that have come out of this site in the past. I think a lot what's being accomplished or proposed here today is going to resolve some of that, if not all, that problem in terms of parking for events or anything else that may occur at the Botanical Garden itself.
And as I understand, both item number four and number five on the City Attorney's Agenda, there are no plans to make any changes in what's going on at the Botanical Gardens. It's just to clean up the zoning.
Yes, ma'am. It is to bring everything into compliance with the zoning out there so they can operate as a legit, if you want to call it that, Botanical Garden for this area.
And the reason that we have to do this is that this land was owned by the state and it's now been...
By the city. That's right.
Thank you so much.
That's all the questions. We will bring that back for a vote next week. Our resolution listed today is a water and sewage revenue bond, Series 2016 approval. We've got Mr. Murphy here, Ms. Slate, and others from the Water Works, but it's ready for adoption. This is part of the revenue bond series that you heard about earlier this year and the last year.
Got a motion in second for approval. Is there any discussion related to this resolution? Seeing that there's none, it is queued for electronic voting. I think we're missing one. I'm going to check the buttons again. There we go.
All right, that has passed. Thank y'all for being here. Mayor, with time permitting, we'd like a short executive session on property acquisition and disposal. And let me say, I know we're going to have the TAD district discussion on the City Manager's Agenda. We're going to look at all the maps, do any map amending or boundary changing today that needs to be done. And Mayor Pro Tem is going to make a formal motion that we delay any TAD votes until next week's meeting at nine o'clock.
Okay, and she'll make that on the City Manager's Agenda.
Right. That's all we have.
All right, thank you. Well, this time, we'll enter into our public agenda, and first, we have Mr. Greg Hutchinson, who is here with Breathe Easy Columbus. He wants to talk to us about secondhand smoke, and I think he has a few folks with him as well. So if you all want to come forward. Oh, all right, great, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Perry Alexander, and I'm co-chair of Breathe Easy Columbus. This is Ms. Jamie Austin, our other co-chair.
Good morning.
And we have a number of members in our coalition. Basically, we are a community coalition. We have representatives from education, from medicine. We have representatives from the healthcare provider professions. We have businesses. We are a subcommittee of Live Healthy Columbus. We're also partnering with the American Cancer Society, the American Heart Association, and the American Lung Association. We have coalesced around the issue of the devastation caused by secondhand smoke. If you, I'm sure you're aware that in 2005, the Georgia General Assembly passed a law signed by Governor Sonny Perdue entitled, Georgia, the Georgia Smoke-Free Air, Smoke-Free Air Act. And that's been in effect now for almost 11 years. And so we feel strongly that it's time for us to relook how that is impacting our city of Columbus. That law basically prohibited smoking in many public places, but there were a number of exemptions in that act. And that law also allows for local counties or municipalities to impose greater restriction on smoking if that is their local desire. And that is our desire, and that's generally what we're here to talk to you about today. We have, first of all, I'd like to ask all of our representatives who are here with this issue today if you'd just stand and be seen. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And we have several people who will be presenting from our coalition, and Ms. Jamie Austin, our co-chair, will conclude our presentation for you. And we'll be sensitive of your time, but thank you for your attention.
First, we'd like to introduce Dr. Lee Beverly. Dr. Beverly Townsend, she's going to tell you about the health impacts of secondhand smoke.
Good morning. And what I would like to do, just give you some statistical facts about, and we're happy to be partnering in a collaboration with this Breathe Easy Columbus activity, because we are public health. So statistically, we know that the prevalence of smoking is really high in 18 years old and older, and 26% was higher in Columbus, our district, than the entire state of Georgia. So we were 26%, and the state of Georgia is 19%, and nationally is 18%. So we just want to really bring forth some particular statistics. And when I say the Columbus Health District, I'm not just talking about Columbus proper. This is the main municipality, but we have 16 counties in this district, and all of this information is compiled from that particular, from those particular numbers. So when we talk about cigarette smoking, we talk about tobacco use, we also know that deaths are related to cancer, cardiovascular disease, and respiratory, excuse me, and respiratory disease as well. And the age-adjusted lung cancer incident rate, it was higher in the state than the state in our district. So we are, when we say higher, we just mean every prevalence of the disease, whether for lung cancer, death rate, as well as all of the disease states. And then we have to look at secondhand smoke exposure, and we know that nationally, about 50,000 people died just from secondhand smoke. And even a brief exposure to secondhand smoke does change blood chemistry. So we have a lot of things that occur even from that. And in, when we look at the highest rate, it's the highest, Georgia, it's in our district, actually, Columbus district, actually has the highest prevalence in smoking, secondhand exposure, death, and cardiovascular disease. So when we look at the numbers, we are here to say that statistically, this particular district ranks the highest, or is among the highest of all those disease states that are attributable to smoking. So those are really some of the major facts that we want to bring forth to you from a statistical standpoint. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sherrell Radcliffe, and I'm a non-smoker. I've never smoked a day in my life. However, my lifelong exposure to secondhand smoke by my own parents contributed to my throat cancer diagnosis when I was only 17 years old. I'm 31. I just want to get the message across to you today that secondhand smoke really does kill. I'm a partial laryngectomy, and I have to live the remainder of my life speaking and breathing through a plastic tube. I'm blessed enough to be able to stand here before you today and share my story, but I hope that you allow Columbus to become the second city in the state of Georgia to go smoke-free. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of the council, I want to briefly explain, give you the faults of the business community, at least from the chamber's perspective, that although the 2005 legislation did much to improve the state of Georgia in making our state more healthy, initiating better wellness programs, and also the acts of many independent businesses, both individual businesses, but also whole sectors, from the Board of Regents to the Technical College System, many groups have made the right steps to make sure we have the ability to prevent the kind of disease that tobacco can provide. But we just want to encourage you to do all you can to support Breathe Easy. We think it'll make Columbus more sought after, more wellness. We've got a lot to do in the area of healthcare when you look at the cost and what it does to individual lives, so thank you.
In closing, we'd like to thank you all for listening to our presentation. Now that we've shared with you the health, the business, and the personal impact of secondhand smoke, we would like you to consider allowing Breathe Easy Columbus to work with the City Attorney to draft a model ordinance that would address the issues of the dangers of secondhand smoke and the costly impact of secondhand smoke associated in workplaces throughout the city of Columbus, thus improving the quality of life for all of the citizens of Columbus, Georgia. At Breathe Easy Columbus, we like to say, good for health, good for business, and good for Columbus.
Thank you. Why don't we do this, Mr. Fay, why don't you draft a sample ordinance, but also, I think we need a referral on just how this has worked in other communities, and the pros and the cons, and the impacts, and to make sure that whatever the stakeholders may be, that we've gotten a broad sense of that, and maybe come back with a report and update to council. Again, I think that's sort of a referral to you and maybe to you too, Mr. City Manager, if we can't look at other cities, and maybe GMA has some information on this.
Well...
And the Mayor Pro Tem has said she'll be the sponsor.
Okay. What I'd like to do is probably appoint Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin to do some research and maybe come back and provide a briefing to you, Mayor and council, and kind of tell you about some other cities and what we're doing in Georgia Southeast, how it's working, and just to educate you a bit more. So we can certainly do that, and then work with Breathe Easy and the City Attorney, she can, to then draft a sample ordinance after you've been updated and had some input with direction to the staff and City Attorney.
Great, thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
That'll be good. We can coordinate that, Ms. Goodwin, in our office. We know that there are some places out there who have spent a lot of money on ventilation systems, but even if we end up passing an ordinance that's prospective in nature going forward, you know, there may be a way to work it where those folks can continue to operate.
Okay. All right, well, we look forward to your help on this and input, and so let us do a little homework, and I'm sure our folks will be getting with you for the information that you've gathered as well. So thank you so much. Next, we have Mr. Robert Teasley, Teasley, who's representing SWSW Investments, who has a hardship variance. Request for hardship variance. Hello.
Good morning. I'm Robert Teasley, President of Signs Incorporated here in Columbus, celebrating my 40th year in the sign industry here. I've had the pleasure of serving on several committees here, including the drafting of the current sign ordinance. You don't see me much here, because we, you know, we try to work these things out before we come here, and I only come when there is an extreme hardship. I've been pretty lucky over the years going through the variance committee, but every once in a while, we'll have something that not everybody can agree on. So our last, our next choice is to come to City Council. And what we have here is we're asking for additional about four feet seven inches in height of a sign that's right now currently entitled 35 feet in height, and we're asking for 336 square feet. This site consists of approximately 12 acres. This building's approximately 130,000 square feet. We'll have multiple tenants. We're, it sits down in a hole, and I have a few pictures. May I put this on the project? You see the crest of the hill coming down the road, you're losing visibility, and you're just right up on it before you see the sign. This sign would normally be entitled, this site would normally be entitled to 300 square feet of signage on two signs, with no more than 250 on one sign. But it would be entitled to two. We're asking for one sign and asking for additional 36 square feet. Also here, I have with me Mr. Scott Harris, if he could come forward, and he's representing Stars and Strikes, which will be one of the tenants in the center. Would that be okay?
Good morning. My name's Scott Harris. I'm Director of Marketing for Stars and Strikes. We're a family entertainment center with bowling, laser tag, arcade, opening here in Columbus in June of 2016. We feel we're investing close to $8 million in the facility. We're also going to be employing over 100 local residents of Columbus, and we feel that on Veterans Parkway going north, when you're going between 45 and 55 miles an hour, you just can't really see the sign, and we feel that it would really help us make our center a success and bring... And we feel that it would really help us make our center a success and bring good, quality, clean, safe family entertainment to Columbus.
Let me ask Mr. Teasley, just for my own edification. Clifton, is this the way this normally works on the public agenda? Somehow this is procedurally off to me.
No, we're going to need some sort of report from planning, whether, if they've denied it, these folks can come here. If there's an appeal route, that's fine, but we need what the planning department recommendation is and...
Yeah, I think what normally happens, and you just need to check, I mean, I would assume, and I, you know, can't give you any legal opinion here, but I would assume that maybe your appearing here has met your time, if there was a time limit. I don't know, you need to check on that. But I think the way it goes is that you alert the staff that you have an appeal, and then, does he come up on your agenda, Clifton? And I'm just speaking...
Normally, yes.
Yeah, and see, then that way, council has, you know, your opposition...
If there is an appeal to this body, but that's why we need something from Mr. Jones outlining the procedure.
Right, and then, you see, I think like we have members from BZA here, and so then, like, you would speak and then they would speak, and then council would have this information...
We've been through this process several times. Once before was with calls going through Plaza. And when I called the clerk of council to get on the agenda, I stated it was, in fact, you know, to appeal the decision of the variance board. Now, the process, I was not steered any other direction except to be on the agenda to come here.
Okay, let's get an update.
Okay, now, we've got, we've got the ordinance itself from Mr. Johnson now. This is a rare exception where an appeal can be made directly to council. It says appeals from the decision of the board of zoning appeals shall be made directly to the council, but no such appeal should be allowed until and unless the agreed party has exhausted the remedies set forth in this article, which I assume they have done at BZA. So this is an exception.
And we have exhausted.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to throw a wrench in the works, it may be you've got all 10 counselors on board here. I just, we usually, we have a report from our staff. So, you know, in the booklets and council reads them and they ask questions as they go along, and I just don't want anybody to make a decision without full information. So at this point, how do we proceed if this is an unusual appeal process to public agenda?
Well, we can either take a vote today, or we can hear from inspections and code, who's involved with this, and let them give you all a report before you take a vote next week.
All right, well, I certainly don't mind hearing from Mr. Jones or inspections and codes, whoever it is, but I do think we need some sort of a better process where council has a report, so we definitely need to look at these types of appeals. Counselor Allen?
In reading the handout from the board of zoning appeals, it appears that they felt like they could not make a decision. They didn't disagree with it, but I would like to hear from Mr. Adams if, or I guess Mr. Hutchinson is fine.
Good morning. Ed Adams, Chairman, Board of Zoning Appeals. Yeah, it was in our opinion that we look at every case, but let me just say, we look at every case individually. There's no precedent or anything like that. Every piece of property is different. And in this case particularly, it was in our opinion that the location of the sign is what's causing the hardship. The fact that the sign was moved back, and I, they don't have a site plan, but the fact that the sign was moved back into the property caused the hardship. The hardship was not caused by the UDO. And so in our opinion, that's why we denied it.
If I could, Mayor?
Yes.
Mr., can I ask Mr. Teasley, is the request to relocate the sign?
No, the request is to, for the location, it's not to relocate it. We have a space that we want to put the sign.
Sir, if you could speak in the mic, the other counselors can't hear.
Okay. From the beginning of the project, we had a location specific for the sign on the property, and we applied for that location on the property, you know, away from the cars where the sign needed to be located. Where that spot is, is a hardship for the sign to be, but that's where the sign needs to be installed.
So, so the request is to put it on the site that you would like it to be on, but increase the height?
That's correct.
Three feet. Is that right?
Right.
Okay.
Sure, we have Counselor Henderson.
Well, and I guess following that line of thought, I appreciate what the BZA does. Y'all have a tough job listening to all these folks. But I know that the original, one of the intents of the original sign ordinance was to handle some aesthetics because they had gotten to where they were going up in different shapes, sizes, materials, and it made some of our primary corridors just uninviting the folks traveling. Do y'all, do y'all factor in the contention from the petitioner that this would actually enhance the way the place looks instead of moving it out where it would be more visible if it ended up, and I don't know, this is subjective, but does that make it look worse on the corridor than if it were positioned a little deeper and a little higher?
Well, I think, I think to answer your question, the, what we factor in is the question that's being asked of us. And with this particular case, the question that's being asked of us was to increase the square footage of the sign due to visibility being the hardship, as was stated in our meeting. And then, when it was looked at, it was the opinion of the board that the visibility is being hindered because the sign is being pushed back into the property. It's not, if the sign was pushed back toward, right outside the right of way, similar to other businesses in town, then visibility would not be hindered, in our opinion.
Yeah, and I just was asking, because I think one of the legislative intents was to make sure, and that's very subjective, but what's prettier, but, and that's why I asked that question, because I'm just curious if they had shown a drawing, shown what it would look like up on the road, or if that would have impacted the decision, so...
Counselor Davis?
Mr. Teasley, right there on the, yeah, behind you. Where it's marked in yellow, that's where the sign's going, right?
That's correct.
And it looks, you know, this is in the district I represent, and it looks like you can see with this site plan here that there, would it be accurate if I say there are limitations? You have several limitations on this property...
Absolutely.
...as it is, as it stands. And I can appreciate that what you're trying to accomplish there, you've been in business for a long time. I think you understand how the visibility sightlines work, and it looks to me like you truly do have a hardship. If you start moving that sign around in other locations, it's just not going to work. I don't think your request is way out of line. I don't think, when's the last time you've been up here and asked for a variance request?
It's been several years, several years.
Okay, well, you're, you're good about that, so you're good about staying in the guidelines. So I would view this as a hardship, as a hardship request. I think, Madam Mayor, in response to what you were saying, Mr. City Attorney, I'm not sure if the procedure here, I'm not, I don't understand if they're working on a timeline here, which I think you said earlier, you've exhausted a lot of measures, and you're probably getting close with your site working on what you've got to finish things up. I'm not sure about the appeal process, but what I heard a little while ago is that we have the ability here to make that decision. Is that correct?
Yes, in this rare exception, you do. The appeal is to council, directly to you, not to the board of zoning appeals, and in your legislative discretion, you can grant it or deny it.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to add to that? Is anything else anybody want to add?
I think we've pretty much covered it.
I mean, it's been a long time since I've seen somebody try to push their sign all the way back into the parking lot, which is, you know, you can make the argument that that's not a bad thing. But I understand what you're trying to accomplish there, and it does look like a hardship. And based on this letter, not saying that there was anything wrong with the decision, but, you know, there was a concern based on this letter of not really understanding the ability to move and why you couldn't move, which it looks pretty obvious there to me now. Is there anything that needs to be said?
No, sir. Anything, John, stop.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Terry Fields, a member of the board of zoning appeal. And we also have two other members here, Ty Harrison and Barbara Orson, in support of our decision. It was, when you look at the sign regulations in the UDO, we're all aware that we have not had good sign regulations in the past until the 2005 UDO. The property, the sign regulation does not put a hardship on this property. The sign is moved back, they are requesting enlarging the sign, square footage, because of visibility. If you put the sign out like everybody else has, if you look around, a majority of the good signage has been put up in Columbus since the UDO signed regulation. And it's at a skewed angle, and you're driving down the road. I've asked several people about this, just off the wall, not even told them about the project was, or where it was, or nothing. And the hardest thing, finding a business to patronize, if you're a first-time visitor, a second-time visitor, a third-time visitor to the town, is to find a business where the sign is not out where it should be, which is out at the property line, closer to the road. When you take a business that does not have good signage, and they have the sign on the building, you're going to miss it. I mean, it's just hard to find. Glenn, the answer to your question is, that sign can be moved out and be in regulation with the sign regulation, there's no hardship that, I mean, when you, when you move one back, naturally the letters are going to get smaller. So we stand by our decision that the regulation does not present any hardship on the sign placement or square footage.
Let me just ask you, with the city limitations and all, there's all setbacks...
I'm hard of hearing, so you go.
With, with all the limitations and regulations that come along with placement of the sign, where would you put the sign at?
I would put it in regulation, within three feet of the property line, squared up with the road like you normally do, and like you see good signage has been done. This is a new board...
But you've got power lines and all kinds of other factors out there, don't you?
Power lines are well above the 35-foot...
But you've got, you've got distance requirements there, was that 15, 15 feet or something like that you have to get away from it?
Power poles is not a problem because you're going, if you, if you have it where it is now, you're still going to have a power pole that may be, it's going to be less obstruction to be out at the property line, within three feet of the property. The profit, the regulation does not present a hardship. And we need to be good stewards for the regulation and back it up. If we're going to improve the aesthetics of Columbus and the character of Columbus is what we're trying to do with the tree ordinance and the sign regulations. Sign regulations weren't here prior to 2005, and you know it got all out of hand over the years. Look back at all the signs, Victor Driver's a good case there.
Okay, we've obviously got differing opinions, but let's also hear from Mr. Hutchinson.
Well, we do. We've got Counselor Thomas. Counselor Thomas, would you like to go now, or would you like to hear from Mr. Hutchinson first?
I have a question.
Sure.
And then if you want to. This site plan that is here, is this something that you or the planning department has to approve?
Well, when we look at it, they, when they submit...
I guess my real question is, the placement of the sign, has that been approved by whomever does that?
That's a part of the variance. He could place it...
No, 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 no. Mr. Teasley made this, this...
Yes.
...site plan and said, here's where we want to put the sign, right?
Correct.
Has that been approved by your department? Does your department have to approve that?
If it stays within the UDO, he could put it wherever he wanted with the square footage. We don't, we don't approve that. We just, if it's a variance, if it's bigger than the square footage, which is bigger than the 300 and the height requirements, that's when he has to come...
I'm not asking about the size of the sign, I'm asking about the location of the sign. Does the location of the sign have to be approved by your department?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so Mr. Teasley can put this sign anywhere on that plot that he chooses to put it on?
As long as it does not go over the height requirements or the square footage requirements.
Okay, so what came to the, to the board of zoning appeals was because it was to be larger...
Too tall.
...than the UDO. And Mr. Teasley can put it wherever on that property he chooses to put it? Okay, maybe we hear from them, but Mayor, I get back in line, maybe?
Sure, yeah. Just go ahead and push the button again. John, why don't you move over to the, oh, go ahead, Mr. City Manager, and then we do want to hear from Mr. Hutchinson.
Madam Mayor, because planning is involved in this as well, I'd like for Mr. Jones to make some comments regarding Counselor Thomas's question.
Sure, okay.
To try to help and explain this situation away, when anybody comes in now for an application for a sign particularly, it is up to inspection code to review that application. If it meets all the criteria under the UDO, straight up, they can go ahead and issue the permit, there's nothing said. But when you get a situation like this where they are moving the sign back into the parking lot or moving it somewhere else, and they cannot officially, I guess, issue that permit, their only option is to allow that person, if they don't agree, is allow that person to come to the board of zoning appeals and appeal their request. Once, once board of zoning appeals hears it, and should they, should they grant their request, then the permit can be issued. In this particular case, though, BZA did not agree with that, and so the matter moves on now to council for your determination to make that. If council at that point then decides that this is a good, this is a good thing, and you agree to it, then inspection codes can actually issue that permit at that time. But until, until somebody tells us differently, inspection code cannot issue a permit.
Okay.
Because of the size, not because of the location.
It could be either or, either or, or both of those factors, but you're right, yes. It has to meet the criteria established by this council under the UDO.
Because Mr. Teasley did not come to the board of zoning appeals to appeal the location, he came to appeal the size of the sign. Is that correct?
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so that, that should be what the discussion, what the decision of this council is, is should we grant Mr. Teasley a variance based on the size of the sign? And if he chooses to move it as the board of zoning appeals has recommended, that's a decision that he and his client make on the, on the property, it would seem to me. Whether or not we grant the variance is strictly on the size of the sign.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Typically, codes and inspections, we are in an advisory role. We, we're not for or against anything that comes to BZA. So we just enforce the rules. They come in and ask for a variance, and then I present it to the board. So typically, we don't get into, oh, well, we prefer this or that, as long as it fits in the ordinance and depending on what the board approves of, I don't have any voting stake in it, I'm just there as information. So I don't have a preference either or. We just understand that per what we've done, as you can see now, is that's the sign that they want to use. Per the UDO, 35 feet is the limit. They want the additional four feet, which would make it 39. They also, 300 is the square footage allowed on each face, and they want 350 square feet. So those are the two variances they are requesting.
Okay. All right. Mr. City Attorney, where are we at this point in this odd appeal process, in my estimation?
After some more factual hearing, you will have time to make a motion and consider the request.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Chris Whiteman. I'm part of the development ownership group that is developing the property, the old Buffalo Rock Bottling Plant. And I wanted to just address Councilwoman Thomas's questions about the location. And if I could have the, that other site plan put back up, we didn't locate the sign in the middle of the parking lot by design. It was more out of a necessity. If you will, and if I walk over here, or, at the bottom, we have underground attention because the site was so tight here. And if you'll notice those three lines... because the site was so tight here, and if you'll notice those three lines, these three dash lines in there, they represent underground water detention for the site. And at the end of that, there is a water cleaning station, if you will, underground, that the water has to be cleaned before it is released back into the city. That coupled with the power lines that are located there along Veterans Parkway, really limited where we could position the sign, that it would be effectively visible in both directions to potential patrons to the, to the center. So, that was, it was more out of a product of necessity than out of original design as to why the sign is located where it's located.
Okay. Anything? Counselor Davis?
I would tend to agree. It's very unusual to see a developer come in and put their sign in the middle of the parking lot without there being some issues. And if you had the possibility to move it closer to the road, I believe that. So, I think it's a hardship. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this variance request today. Madam Mayor?
Okay. We've got a motion, I think I heard a second, was that you, Mr. Buck? All right, we have Counselor Thomas with further discussion.
I'm wondering, Mayor, if Counselor Davis would be agreeable that part of that granting of this variance is that the sign stay where it is, that we're not gonna grant the variance and then let them move it closer to the road to, so-
That would be an appropriate condition.
Counselor Davis?
It's very appropriate, that would be, that would be part of the request of the variance.
Do I need to make that as a motion, or was that included in your-
You can restate it, you can restate it, Counselor Davis.
You can attach that to it, Mr. City Attorney.
The motion is, the motion would be to grant the hardship variance with the condition that the sign remain at its present location.
That's right. If it was moved, that sign moves, I would not be making a motion to request a variance.
Okay.
I don't think it has a choice.
I would make an approval of variance.
It really doesn't have much of a choice, is the way it can, just because of what's located underground and above ground.
And I want to make that clear on the record.
Yes, sir.
That would be my position for anybody else down the line that would be coming. The same, what I just said applies.
All right. We have a motion and a second to grant the request with the stipulation that not be moved closer to the road. Since this is not listed as an action item, but is on public agenda, we're going to take an oral vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
I'm gonna recuse.
Oh, oh, excuse me, Counselor Barnes has to recuse, yes, sir.
Okay. I want to recuse myself.
Okay, we have to take a vote on your recusal, don't we?
Can you state for the record why, Mr. Barnes?
I've had some dealings with Mr. Teasley.
Okay. It may be that you're not really recused unless you have a financial interest in this particular interest, even if he's a good-
In this particular interest.
Oh, in this particular-
Explain.
Well, the city attorney's better to explain, but if-
Clifton?
Yeah.
If you don't have a financial in this particular location, then you don't have to disqualify.
Good to go.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Yeah, it has to be in this particular instance. So, let me call it one more time. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, thank you all. And, Mr. City Attorney, I am going to make a, okay, yes.
And I want to say, I really appreciate the Board of Zoning Appeals and the position that you've taken on this, you did the right thing, in my opinion. So, I do thank you for coming here today and stating your own position on the matter.
Counselor Henderson?
And I just, just to tag on to that, I mean, the BCA is charged with reading the UDO and acting according to the guidelines, and UDO did their job exactly the way they're supposed to, this is how the process works. Any hardship that is outside the confines of that document should probably be appealed to us, so we'll thank them for what they've done.
All right.
Thank you again, Mr. Adams, for being here, that's the way the process should work.
Mr. City Attorney, I'd like to make a referral, that you look into the procedure related to appeals to council. It seems inherently procedurally inappropriate to me to have a full-fledged hearing in the public agenda. That just, it seems like that's something that should be on the city attorney's agenda somehow.
I think when, when they look at the next text amendment for the UDO, that this can be, the section that I read earlier, we can certainly put something in there that it'll be read on the city attorney's agenda.
Yeah, because that was just a full-fledged hearing, and that's not a public agenda item. All right, thank you. We'll move on then to Mr. Christopher Brown, who's here with Love Our Youth, Inc. Is Mr. Brown here? All right. And next then, we'll have Audrey Holston Palomar, and she'd like to speak to us about the tax freeze. Good morning.
Good morning.
If you would just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Audrey Holston Palomar. My address is 1035 Lawyer's Lane, Columbus, Georgia.
Floor's yours.
Okay. Good morning, elected and appointed officials of the Columbus, Georgia Consolidated Government. Good morning, citizens of Columbus, Georgia. As I have already stated, I am Mrs. Audrey Holston Palomar. I was born to this earth by the parentage, to the parentage of Robert Lee Holston and Marion Williams Holston, on a hot sunny day of July 28th in the year 1958, at what is now presently known as the Midtown Medical Center of Columbus, Georgia. I am at the threshold of becoming a homeowner here in the city of Columbus, Georgia, which makes me very proud, and the threshold position stimulates my concern of the local current politics of the much discussed freeze. The tax freeze controversy is very important to me. I am thankful and humbled by the actions of loved ones significant to me for such a blessing of care provided to me for this, for me to be at this junction in my life. I cannot recall an opportunity to pose questions I have about the tax freeze propaganda prior to or after the 9-1 vote enacted by you, the elected officials of this consolidated government. I am very appreciative of this opportunity to present my questions publicly to individuals that I trust will inform me properly. In spite of my earned master degree in the field of education, and further gain of knowledge acquired beyond the master degree at Columbus State University, I am at a point of realizing that there are characteristics of the tax freeze I have questions about. I want to be better equipped to go into the ballot box and cast my votes intelligently about the property tax freeze issue, maintenance, or the tax freeze issue of thawing. At this time, I would like to address Mrs. Tomlinson, the elected mayor of the city of Columbus, Georgia. It is my lay understanding, as a citizen of this city, you have revised the incorrect wording deemed illegal presented previously for approval about the tax freeze. The fact, you took the time to revise what was determined wrong reminded me of my days of an actively engaged learner concerned about getting my goal achieved. There were times I had to redo work in order to pass the test. In my reading, the new ballot text, the word repeal sticks out in my mind. Please, Mrs. Tomlinson, so that I may be informed properly, tell me, are you the sole author of the new ballot text?
You go ahead and finish, and then I'll respond to your questions, because you have time, you have 10 minutes to speak, and so you, you finish, and then I'll answer your questions. So, I'll mark that down as one, question number one.
Will you be willing at this time to explain the word repeal to the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, in reference to a maintenance or thawing of the tax freeze controversy? I only have three more questions for you, Mrs. Tomlinson, that I believe will help me make an informed, intelligent decision about the property tax issue on the possible vote I'll need to cast when I am in the ballot box.
All right, go ahead, that's your five-minute warning.
Question one is like a summary question. I would also appreciate if you would be willing to provide the verbal answer to this question in writing to me, if not to others in the city. This is the question. Explain base year assessed value homestead exemption. It is also likened to a summary question. Again, I would also appreciate if you would be willing to provide the verbal answer to this question in writing to me, if not to others in this city. Question two. How will the base year assessed value be determined? My final question at this time, is a question that requires the answer yes or the answer For the sake of my threshold, I have the assessment freeze. Will I be able to keep it after I make improvements on my home? I am prepared to receive your, your answers to the questions.
Are you concluded, you have three more minutes?
I am prepared to receive your answer to the question of-
That's, that's fine.
The word repeal-
You have 10 minutes to speak, and then, and then I will turn off the microphone and answer your questions, so I just want to make sure your, your comments are concluded.
Is it, my comments will be concluded in thanking you for your answers.
Okay, all right. Thank you, well, thank you for your important comments. Let me get to some of those questions. First of all, number one, you asked if I was the author of the new text.
The sole author.
If I was the author of the new text. I'm not any of the authors, not the sole author, not one author, not 10 authors, I'm not at all an author, I didn't write it at all. It was actually written by legislative council for the state legislature, legislature in Atlanta. And to your important point, there actually, nor was I the author of the original one, by the way. That was drawn up by some tax experts and lawyer experts to include a former legislative council. But, no, no, ma'am, see, this is why we don't do that, we don't get in a debate, you've had an opportunity to speak, you asked me questions, and so I'm gonna respond. There's actually two ways that you can address a local constitutional amendment. And one is through, if it's a local constitutional amendment, you can address it through Article 11 of the Georgia Constitution. The tax experts that we originally consulted thought that was the best way to address this issue on a ballot referendum. However, when it went up to the Georgia Legislative Council, they thought that it was primarily a tax exemption issue. And so, they preferred that we pursue it through Article 7. Well, as you know, if you may know some lawyers, there's always different ways of looking at things, and so since they thought it was predominantly a tax exemption issue, they rewrote it to be an Article 7 issue, which is, is fine, is certainly a legal judgment that one can make. So, they, they declined the Article 11 path and opted for the Article 7 path. The repeal does not appear in the, the present referendum language, because the Legislative Council didn't have to put it in there, because they chose to pursue this issue as an Article 7 issue. Had they chosen to pursue it as an Article 11 issue, they would have to legally include the word repeal. So, as it stands right now, as Legislative Council drafted it, the word repeal is not in the current language. As to, let's see, your next question was, what is the base year value homestead exemption? The, in Columbus, we have a valuation freeze, the year that you purchase your home, it is assessed at that fair market value, or at that moment in time, and that becomes your base year valuation, okay? And it's then frozen virtually infinitum until you transfer the property pass or whatever, nothing else interrupts that base year. So, that's your, your base year, and it is actually set by Georgia law, has a calculation, a way that it's set, and parameters through which it's set, and so it's set very strictly by that Georgia law, and that's your base year homestead, base year value homestead exemption. And so, I think that answers both, actually, which would be questions three and four, but you, you listed as items one and two. And then, your last question was, if this passes, because the voters have to, to pass this ballot referendum, if it were to pass, and you were in the original freeze tax system, and you improved the value of your home, the application of law would be precisely as it is now. So, for all those who remain in the, in the property tax freeze system, that system has all the rules and regulations and applications that it currently has, even after this ballot initiative passes. So, for instance, if you make, if you make improvements to your home today, or, and you're in the freeze system, or if you make your improvements after this passes, and you're in the freeze system, then those improvements are valued at that point in time, and that becomes part, added into your valuation base. So, the rest of your home stays as it was originally valued, and then the improvements are added on to that. So, if you had bought a house for $80,000, and you added a pool, let's just say for $20,000, to make round numbers, then the pool would be valued in current day terms, and that would be added to your base value. Now, that's the way the law is now, that's the way the law would be later. It also would apply if you had a spouse, for instance, a lot of people own homes with their spouses. If your spouse would pass today under the system, then of course, the surviving spouse gets the homestead exemption. That would also remain the same, you would continue the homestead freeze exemption even after this referendum passes. So, if you're in the freeze, you stay in the freeze even after the referendum passes. So, I think that answers all your questions. So, thank you.
My question is-
Well, I know, and see, this is what we were talking about, the back and forth, because we have a lot of other people.
Well, you brought up the fact that the word repeal is not in the local, as it was when you all took the 9-1 vote, was it not in there?
No, it was not in there at the 9-1 vote.
Oh, okay, because the word repeal, it sticks out, like I said, in my mind, because this is the indication that the act, that you say you did, you were not the orchestrator of the-
I didn't write it, no, ma'am.
You didn't write it, but were you a supporter of the new text?
Oh, well, absolutely, with the deal we made, with this council was very interested in what Legislative Council thought, our local legislation, Legislative delegation was very interested. I preferred the Article 11 approach, but I understand the legal analysis of the Article 7 approach, and Legislative Council felt very strongly about it. Again, I prefer the Article 7, the Article 11 approach, but I think Article 7 is a valid approach, too.
Okay, well, the reason I'm concerned is because this is the new text that I have been provided.
Right, the Article 7.
I don't know, I don't know when this came about after the 9-1 vote, that's, that's the only-
No, it was the 9-1 vote, ma'am, that is the language that was the 9-
The word repeal was in the 9-1 vote?
No, no, ma'am. Okay.
But, you know, like I said-
Yeah.
I'm concerned about what I've read as being the new ballot text, and the word repeal is, it sticks out in the very first sentence, which makes me think that there is- think that there is a concern about who's controlling the potential or...
Yeah, that's no longer in there. But I'm going to have to cut you off. The time has been exceeded. Counselor Thomas, did you have a comment?
Yes, ma'am. It might help. Let me read you what the ballot language says.
Could you put it on screen?
No, we don't have, I can't because we don't have the facility to do that right now. It's real short.
Ma'am, no ma'am.
Have you ever been on the...
No, Ms. Palmore, you're out of order.
Let me just read it to you, please.
A word just passed, I've taken up too much time.
I'm sorry. I don't have it in writing. I have it on my computer screen, which is why...
Well, give me a printout.
Okay. No, I can't.
I just wanted to end by saying, thank you, Mr. Thomas, for your effort to assist me in my effort to be an informed citizen about the property tax freeze issue and the new ballot text that has been...
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. And we continue on with the same subject. Next, we have Mr. Gary Kason, who would like to speak to us about the tax freeze. Good morning.
Good morning.
If you would just state your name.
My name is Gary Kason, and I would thank you, Madam Mayor, councilors, with a chance to appear before you.
About his address, I didn't hear it.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you. Please no shouting. Mr. Kason, I'm going to start your time again. If you would, just state your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry.
Your name and address for the record. It's a requirement of the public agenda.
Thirty-one twenty-eight College Drive, Gary Kason. And Madam Mayor, councilors, again, I'll repeat, thanks for the opportunity to be in here. And I'd like to especially thank Representative Buck, who was the chairman of our delegation way back when this tax freeze was first introduced. Representative Buck came to me, since he was chairman of the delegation, and said, "Your Republican buddies have come up with an idea, and we want you, I'd like for you to handle this bill." Usually, as a matter of course, the chairman of the delegation handles the bill, but he asked me to do it. Now, it's probably the best thing that ever happened to me. It's probably the best thing that ever happened to Columbus, Georgia. It has saved the taxpayers a ton of money over these years. I'd like to tell you a little story, and I don't, I can understand the lady being confused because I very seldom get confused about these kinds of things, but I'm confused, too. To tell you a story I loved to read, and one of the first things I did when I was elected to office, somebody sent me a book, and it was called, "Do You Think We Write the Bills?" And one of the chapters has this senator, very distinguished-looking, he's down there, and he's listening, and he hears somebody down there is talking about a bill. And he says, "Oh, my God." And so he goes down there, he rushes down there, and he tells them, he says, "Wait a minute, wait a minute." He gets the floor and says, "This is the worst bill I've ever seen in my life." And he goes through it point by point by point, telling them how bad it is, and somebody in the back of the room is raising their hand, and he ignores them. And so finally, he gets, he just knew he had to get his attention. He goes down there, and he togs on the senator's coat, and he says, "Senator, this is your bill." And the senator, "Now that I've told you all the bad points about this bill, I want to tell you about all the good points about this bill." And that's the way this seems to be handling right here. I remember the first words to Madam Mayor, it was at one of her meetings when, I think his name was Mr. Palmer, she touted his resume by saying he defended this bill when it was being challenged with constitutionality, and he successfully defended, and I would like to thank him for that. But then, she asked who wrote the bills. I think Mr. Palmer, she touted all along, said that he was very instrumental in passing in writing this bill. And so, the first bill, I said, "Madam Mayor, this is patently unconstitutional. If you want to find something that you would say was unconstitutional, you would pattern it after this bill that was first proposed to us." And our former city attorney agreed, strike one on Mr. Palmer. We come up with the second proposition, and I'm assuming Mr. Palmer had a part in writing that piece of legislation. And it was evidently decided it was unconstitutional, too, unconstitutional also, and so we go to the third writing of this bill, and it's, we said it was unconstitutional, evidently it was decided it was unconstitutional, and now, lo and behold, we got the fourth version of it. And I, you know, it's easy to get confused when you've got that many proposals for you, and I would suggest to you that what we have before you now, and I would like for y'all to reconsider your action, what you passed before is not the bill that's before the General Assembly. I would propose it's an entirely different bill, and you can't do that without advertising it. And I could go on and on and on, and I would, any way you want to handle this thing right now before the General Assembly is still patently unconstitutional. You cannot have two classes of taxpayers. You cannot have people under the freeze and not under the freeze. That's been decided many, many times, and you can, just like the mayor says, you can have attorneys argue one way or the other, but I'm telling you right here, right now, that what y'all have passed is patently unconstitutional. If it passes, somebody's going to take it to court and challenge it. I don't know what this means. It means my time is up.
Yes, ma'am. That's just your five-minute warning. I'm going to add five more minutes.
Okay. And I would like to thank the mayor. She also was very kind enough to say, with all this just happening in the last, you know, since last week, really, that we could add a couple of speakers, three speakers, and they won't take very long, and I'm going to yield the rest of my time, to Alton Russell, Charmaine Crabbe, and Nathan Smith, and they will take a very short period of your time. But I would like for you to urge you to listen to Mr. Smith. He's got a presentation I'd like for you to hear. And reconsider what you're doing because what you sent up there is unconstitutional. Madam Mayor, I thank you.
Thank you. And just to make sure the procedure's correct, because we don't want to have other people get the wrong impression when they come to speak on public agenda, just as they did with Breathe Easy Columbus, you saw three or four people speak, and that's fine, as long as they speak within the 10 minutes that were allotted them. So there's four minutes and 21 seconds left, and we'll hear from the next individual. Good morning. If you'll just state your name for the record.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Charmaine Crabbe. I live at 3237 Maricopa Drive here in Columbus, Georgia. I thank you for this opportunity to ask you to rescind your vote that sent the tax bill to the state legislature last week for consideration. The bill that was presented was not a revision. It was a new bill, and therefore, subject to specific protocol. The Open Meetings Act requires that a bill be included in a published agenda on the Friday prior to the meeting. This did not occur. The bill was presented to council members mere hours prior to the council meeting, leaving you little time to review and prepare for the vote. Today, we stakeholders are being given the opportunity to appear and be heard, but we should have been given that opportunity prior to the vote. The bill should have been advertised in the paper and proper notice given prior to the vote. I and many other concerned citizens believe these are irresponsible and possibly illegal actions. I understand that you want to give the citizens an opportunity to vote on this very important issue, but the citizens also deserve to have its representatives respect established protocols and laws that were put in place to protect our community and its citizens. I respectfully ask that you rescind last week's vote and take the necessary time to research the present bill, its constitutionality, its constitutional impact on our community, and the consequences of upcoming decisions. It is better to err on the side of caution than to dance too close to the cliff. Thank you very much for your time.
I'll be absolutely agree. Yes, you have two minutes and 33 seconds. If you just state your name and address for the record.
Thanks. My name is Nathan Smith. My address is 6432 Old Post Court here in Columbus, Georgia. Thank you for the opportunity. After speaking with some local attorneys and citizens, these are the following points I would like to make. Number one, the proposal voted on at the last city council meeting was not a mere revision of the original proposal. It is an entirely new bill. Number two, any item City Council takes action on should be included on the public agenda on the Friday before the meeting. The only exception would be for emergency items. Number three, Open Meetings Act requires that such notice be given before any official action may be taken with the emergency exception mentioned. Number four, since the bill has already been advertised in the paper, introduced in the House, there is plenty of time to hold another council meeting where this item is properly noticed to the public and have a fair hearing where any interested stakeholder could appear and be heard. Number five, it would be irresponsible and possibly illegal for the council to maintain the nine-to-one vote was taken in accordance with Georgia law. Number six, if the council refuses to reconsider its action and pursue this item using the correct protocols, we will protest with the legislative delegation that the bill before them has not been properly approved by this council, and we will stop it. Number seven, there are still questions about the legal ramifications of a new proposal and how we can be sure it will not end up removing the freeze in its entirety immediately when subjected to a legal challenge. It creates two different classes of taxpayers. That goes against equality. Number eight, that's the Fourteenth Amendment, I do believe, of the United States Constitution. We should hear from attorneys that have not been paid by the city or by the mayor to find out if the decision is going to take it away from everybody or not. We have not done that. In fact, every independent attorney that's not being paid by the city has made it perfectly clear that it is a violation, and it would eliminate the tax freeze for everybody. And I hear the buzzers going off. I would just ask that you reconsider, make a motion. There's still time. It's already before the agenda. There's still time for you just to make a motion to revote and do it the right way. That's all we're asking. Just do it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of things, real quick, that may clear up some concerns is, one, a legislative agenda is not required by a city government or county government. The legislative delegation of any community can introduce bills at any time without even a request from the city council. However, some of the more sophisticated communities do present legislative agenda, and they do so by resolution, not by ordinance. And a resolution is not what is being cited to with the Georgia law related to needing notice and so on and so forth, because it's not an act of law. It's just a preference or a courtesy of the council's, well, preference and intentions. So it's not treated in the same way that an ordinance would be. So that's one of the disconnects, and I think creating this unnecessary concern about the way this was handled. And actually, usually, once a legislative agenda goes up to the legislature, in fact, I don't think it's ever come back to the city council after revisions, and I mean severe revisions. I think just last year, we had, wasn't it, the Recorder's Court had council sent up, what was the fee? Mr. City Manager, just tell me the numbers. It was $10?
I believe, Mayor, it was either 10 or 15, and it came back at like 25.
25. So council approved on their legislative agenda, they asked for our legislative delegation to pass a law that affected Recorder's Court and requested a $10 or $15 fee, and then just inexplicably, it came back as a $25 fee, and there was no approval by this council for that adjustment. And so that's the way it typically works. But in this instance, because it's a very important issue, the legislative delegation wanted to make certain, council had been updated in the interim as to an interim version that was being kicked around with the Legislative Council, and that is some of the language I think some of you all may have. And then the Legislative Council actually wrote word for word what came back, and they said that's what they would sign off on. Time was drawing nigh, and we thought it was certainly a valid way, one of two valid ways to go. And so council then passed a resolution, nine-one, that they would concur with that being on the ballot, not that they supported the issue of thawing the freeze, but that they would concur to put it on the ballot. So just to clear that up, and also, I hate that, you know, poor Chuck Palmer, who's not here to defend himself, he was not the sole person consulted. We work with ACCG, which is the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, the Georgia Municipal Association. Their lawyers, like I said, prior Legislative Council, who was in fact a tax expert for many years up there with the legislature, helped draft the original version. So again, it's one of those things where, you know, if you ask lawyers ways to write a piece of legislation, if you ask legislators the way to write a piece of legislation, you're going to get revisions along the way, and so that was the process. Mr. City Attorney, did you have any comment you wanted to make related to the process?
Just a couple, Mayor. The vote by the council, nine-to-one, was a courtesy, not legally required for the legislative delegation. The bill itself has been introduced in the Georgia House after being advertised pursuant to OCGA Section 28-1-14. That notice was run in the paper on February the 26th, signed by Representative Smirey. All of that was in accordance with law. Now, it's up to the General Assembly to either pass this bill or not, and then the voters can have a say or not. And constitutionality questions would be decided another day, not at this time.
And certainly, that can be part of the public debate. The citizens can consider varying views of constitutionality, but the truth is, there's only seven people who determine what's constitutional and what's not, and that's the Georgia Supreme Court. None of us here can make those declarations. But Legislative Council signed off on this. The other lawyers involved, who have great bona fides in the field, feel that it is a viable way, even if not their preferred way, as Chuck Palmer stated, but it certainly is a viable way to do this. All right. Next, we have Mr. Michael D. Collins, who would like to speak to us about the tax freeze.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Michael Collins, 945 Overlook Drive, Columbus. Madam Mayor, councilors, thank you for allowing me, excuse me, this chance to address you this morning. The purpose of local government is to protect us. We look to local government for clean water, sewage, roads, schools, fire, and police protection, just to name a few. We expect these things at the lowest price possible. Our government got out of control with rising property taxes, so the Columbus voters passed Muskogee County Property Tax Assessment Freeze in 1983. The freeze is a constitutional right of all homeowners, and we have all earned it. Once again, our government is showing signs of being out of control. For the last year, the policymakers' meetings on the sunset and property tax break proposal for the purpose of to place the thawing of the property tax assessment freeze on the ballot. The thawing of the property tax assessment freeze takes the control of taxes from the citizens and gives it back to the government. The thaw is unconstitutional. It creates a second taxing system on the same set of homeowners. Then last week, a new proposal was introduced. How confusing is this? I'm disappointed with my city council now for placing the thawing of the property tax assessment freeze on the ballot, which will be the largest tax increase in the history of Columbus, Georgia, without the benefit of at least a two-week discussion. Placing the thawing of the property tax assessment freeze on the ballot... Placing the thawing of the property tax assessment freeze on the ballot in this manner is a severe and harsh slap in the face to the Columbus voters. The council needs to prove they will protect us by reconsideration on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to allow Alton Russell to take up the rest of my time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Russell.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, thank you very much. I'm Alton Russell, I live at fourteen twenty-five Autumn Ridge Drive here in Columbus, and I've been here a long time, and I'm staying. First thing is, is I want to make sure that you understand that my concern is not the constitutionality of it, my concern is the fact that how y'all rushed through the vote on that Tuesday night without any public input, without any public knowledge of what the new language was or is. Now, my example is Ms. Palmer. Her discussion was about the language that y'all did not approve on the nine-to-one vote, because nobody knows what was on that nine-to-one vote. It was never published, nobody knows what it is. In fact, I don't know that it's ever been published to the general public at all. If it has, I've missed it, and I've kind of been looking. Now, I was told by one of our council members that it was, that his vote was because he thought it was kind of a housekeeping mess deal, but you know what? The language is so entirely different than what it was the first time and what it's been before. In fact, you know, the mayor has been around with these forums talking about the tax freeze and how lifting the tax freeze was so important, but her sales pitch has been the sixty-five-hundred or sixty-three-hundred, whatever it is, new homestead exemption. That's been the sales pitch, and she did a good job doing that. But the new language removes that extra homestead exemption. There's nothing in there that... So what happens now with the new language is supposedly, if you're under the freeze, you stay there, if you're not, the new people coming to town will have to burden and pay that extra tax because they won't be under the tax freeze, and we know that the tax assessor's office spends time working to increase the evaluation of property every day. That's what they do for a living, and that's good. So my thing is, is that it was not public, no input, and I think that y'all ought to reconsider and make sure that it does not go to the legislature as is written, because I don't know anybody who knows exactly what it says, except Ms. Thomas says she's got it on her computer, well, that's good. But the whole thing was a secret. That Tuesday night that y'all voted, it was a secret to the general public, but it was not a secret to some people, because we had people sitting right up here front who must have had a heads up that it was coming up to be voted on, but the general public did not know. I had a conversation with somebody, and it was where I had part of it, but I never knew what the final language was, and I don't think anybody else does, as of today. Thank you very much, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Appreciate you. We've got one more that wants to speak. I will say, Mr. Russell, I appreciate your concerns, and we will have eight months to talk about the language. We actually got the language just before it was published to council, I think that afternoon before the meeting, so legislative council has a whole lot to do, and we were waiting on them, and we know they're busy and appreciate their service. Next, we have Burke Coker, and he would like to speak to us about OCGA thirty-six thirty-five three and the auditorium. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Burke Coker. I live at five double oh seven Spyglass Court, Columbus, Georgia, three one nine zero nine. I'm here to speak about the tax thaw, and last time I was here, I explained to y'all, this is the way the government works. They call it a tax thaw, I call it a tax defrost. What you do is you set it up, and you try to set it up with an increase in the homestead exemption, but the council at the legislature decided that wasn't the way to do it. So it came back, and y'all tried to revise it, put it in front of the people before, or in front of council before the people had a chance to look at it, and this is the way you work it. You bring it back, and then you say, well, we're going to vote on it without putting a public input, and that's exactly what you did, and there are certain legalities in the Constitution that didn't allow for that. Now, a notice containing a synopsis of the proposed amendment shall be published in the official organ of the county of the legal citizens of the municipal corporation or in a newspaper of general circulation in the municipal corporation once a week for three weeks within a period of sixty days immediately preceding its final adoption. So that was never done, that I know of. And the actual language of the referendum was not read. Clearly, you cannot hold any vote in the state Capitol where the proper procedure and Georgia state law were not followed. Language and was not even reported to the public through the city newspaper and the council meeting. I strongly urge that you rescind this vote. And also, once you make two classes of people, a class of people who are under the freeze and a class of people who are not under the freeze, that's illegal also. The United States Supreme Court decisions are decided by the Georgia Supreme Court in support of legal principle that different tax rates or exemptions cannot be imposed according to the distinction, and it's two seventy-six Georgia, three thirty-two, three thirty-eight constitutional amendment on which the current tax freeze is predicated. Section one of the bill to be submitted to the General Assembly flatly states that the local constitutional amendment is amended by revising the quoted language in section one, then there is ensued the proposal. The Georgia Constitution flatly forbids the amendments of such local constitutional clauses. Any amendment which is continued and enforced and effective after July the first nineteen eighty-seven pursuant to the provisions of subparagraph of the paragraph shall be continued and enforced and effected as a part of this Constitution, except that such amendment may therefore be repealed but may not be amended. Aside from the issues discussed in the preceding paragraph, citizens of Columbus should be concerned about the possibility of an implied repeal of the current tax freeze of the proposed bill in ratifying the November election. The rule on repeals by implication is succinctly stated in Sutton versus Garvin, two forty-five Georgia, six eighty-five, six eighty-seven, nineteen eighty, and at least some proponents of the proposed legislation may entertain hopes that the passage of the new bill will produce the irreconcilable conflict with the present tax freeze, so it is to abolish it. That's why I said the last time I was here. The whole purpose of this tax thaw is to make two classes of people, one class under the freeze, one class not under the freeze, so therefore, they can go up to the Georgia Supreme Court and bring it up, and they can rule that it's unconstitutional due to the fact that you have two different classes, and therefore, they can deem it unconstitutional. But if you keep it as, like it is, then everybody who comes to Columbus, Georgia, has a chance to be under the tax freeze, therefore, everybody has, is constitutional under the, by the Supreme Court. They ruled it... You got to understand that the Supreme Court's ruled on this, the voters have voted on it twice, and every time it was voted and ruled in an affirmative. Y'all just keep pushing and pushing and pushing, and it's somebody who wants this, wants it bad enough to keep pushing, just like the TAD, just like the auditorium, just like all the amenities that y'all push for the, just like the garbage collection fee. I came down and I told you that once you get the one day a week of garbage collections, then you will push for a higher fee, and what happened? It happened. So, this is my ending statement. The auditorium is what it is, it's a white elephant. Y'all cannot take care of it. And we tried to tell you that, or I did, before you built it. You build all these things, and then you don't have the tax money to keep them up. So therefore, what do you do? You try to lift the freeze to get more tax money into, I guess, the coffers, or whatever you call it. But it's like this, the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, pay a lot of taxes. They pay a splash tax, two splash tax, two loss tax, four percent to the state, and then a transportation tax, which we fought a lot, you know, we fought that tooth and nail, and we defeated it sometime, but we, y'all finally pushed it through. And all these taxes are a burden on the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, and I'm telling you right now, the burden will break you back, and when you do that, what are you going to do? You can't take care of the auditorium, you can't take care of the skate park, you can't take care of the civic center, you can't take care of the roads, you can't take care of the sanitary drains that are crashing left and right, like I own Victory Drive, you just overburden us. And when you do that, the coffers get empty, and when the coffers is empty, what happens to y'all's job? You know? And that's the reason the city doesn't get a pay raise, that's the reason policemen don't get their pay raised, and public safety needs a pay raise, public services need a pay raise, they're begging for new garbage trucks, but the thing about it is, when people get dry, are taxed too much, they revoke, and that might be what y'all have when you hand a tax revoked. That's because of the way y'all did the deal the other day, where y'all decided without the input of the public, that you was going to do away with the tax freeze, and that's what this is all about, is doing away with the tax freeze. You're going to have a tax defrost, not a tax thaw. Thank you very much, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Coker. Just a couple of things. The excerpts read by Mr. Coker are actually excerpts related to attempts to amend the charter. The local legislative, or constitutional amendment, I should say, the local constitutional amendment is not part of our charter. So the only way that it can be addressed is through legislative action of the state legislature, which is a process we're going through now, and then, of course, by a vote of the citizens. So those are two separate processes. Also, related to the concern that this effort would, quote, repeal, or somehow make people who have the freeze lose it, one thing about treating this as an Article VII issue, as I was stating before, is that it's treating the issue as an exemption. And so even if there were to be something wrong in some way, which we don't believe there is, we think it's a perfectly valid question, and certainly legislative council does, it would simply just be whether or not the exemption was properly retired, wouldn't have anything to do with the underlying constitutional amendment. So again, about the class of two people, I think that helps you understand that it's simply retiring the freeze. If you're in it, you keep it, but that system's retired and no one else can get into it, and then there's a new system going forward. So without getting into lengthy discussions about the law, just wanted to make that, state that difference about the process to amend the charter and the process to deal with the local constitutional amendment. All right, well, that ends, concludes our public agenda. Thank you all for your time this morning. We will head in now to the city manager's agenda. And we've got the mayor pro temp would like to speak. Yes, ma'am?
I want to make a motion that we hear the resident, hear the information as it relates to the TAD districts on one, two, and three, but that no vote be taken today, it will be delayed to next Tuesday.
Okay. That's a motion to continue on with the public hearing, but take no vote. There's a second, and we have discussion from Councilor Thomas.
I wonder if the mayor pro temp would entertain that we, that it not be next Tuesday? Next Tuesday was the...
Special session.
The work session, and we said nothing on that agenda but parks and rec. So I wonder if you would entertain that, let's do it the next regular council meeting? Would that...
Yes, okay.
Could we...
Yes.
Well, I mean, we were very insistent that next week be nothing on the agenda but parks and rec, so I'd like for us to honor that request, if we could.
Okay. All right, if there's no objection, then it sounds like the motion is to move this to the fourth Tuesday, our meeting on the fourth Tuesday of this month, for purposes of the vote, but to continue forward with the public hearing, and there was a second by Councilor Allen. No further discussion, all those in favor of delaying the vote, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. City Manager.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I'm going to have Director Rick Jones to come around and prepare to share with you changes in the boundaries of at least one of the proposed TADS. We've got representatives here representing each of the TADS on the Sixth Avenue Liberty District. We've got, of course, Ken Blakely here, but we've got Mr. Robert Anderson here from the Liberty. And on the Uptown, we've got President CEO of Uptown, Mr. Richard Bishop here. And on the Second Avenue City Village, I've got Justin, we've got Justin Creed here. And so I'm going to turn the microphone over to Director Rick Jones, and he's going to address the three TADS, but more specifically, the options for changes in boundaries, boundary for at least the Sixth Avenue Liberty District proposed TADS. So, Mr. Jones.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I'm going to be briefing this because of what was the direction we've been asked to go in, or at least the applicants have been asked to go in in terms of this, in terms of any changes, particularly concerned about, I guess, with really the South Commons area more than anything else, at the last time, the last conversation we had in dealing with TADS. The idea was really come back with some options, and the applicants have done that, they've come back with really two, and then there is a third one, the third one is basically as it is proposed today. This is one, right now, the one you're looking at here now is actually taking out the entire South Commons area itself, from consideration as part of the Liberty District TAD itself. The map we passed out to you this morning to show a larger view of how it actually would tie back in to the Liberty District itself. This is one option here, just basically taking everything out, though, from the South Commons area itself. There is another option that would just take out, really just take out, the Golden Park area itself, and that's shown here. This is the Golden Park area that we're talking about here, actually taking that small section out. The baseball stadium itself would actually come out as part, as one of the alternatives here. And of course, the third one here is really, is to, is just to leave as is or has been proposed, really, as part of the Liberty District itself. So those are the options or alternatives that have been proposed, and that's for your consideration this morning.
And so, Madam Mayor, we really need a direction from council as to which option related to Sixth Avenue Liberty District you prefer, and if we at least have that discussion today, then when it comes back for a vote on the fourth Tuesday, then there would be no need for that discussion. And so, we'd like to hear from council.
Okay. We've got several councilors in line. First, we have Councilor Thomas.
Mr. City Manager, Councilor Woodson had to leave, but she asked me to make you aware of her preference would be alternative two without Golden Park. She does not favor the one that removes South Commons, and I just wanted to ask that to you.
Sure.
Counselor Davis.
I too talked to Councilor Woodson, and that was her request as well. I could live with both, to be honest with you. I really think that excluding South Commons, if you do not exclude South Commons, then it would really defeat the general purpose of the TAD. And I say that from a standpoint, I think the whole logic behind keeping South Commons in there was, the city stated that the possibility that there could be infrastructure improvements in that area. But I would argue the point that the Liberty District needs all the help that it can get. But I would argue the point that the Liberty District needs all the help that it can get, and that all the funding from the TAD should go into the Liberty District. So I would prefer that the city did not use the money out of the TAD for infrastructure and used other appropriate funds to deal with those improvements. So I want the council to understand that, that in the future, that there's a possibility that that pot, that would be earmarked for development or redevelopment in the area, economic development, could be tapped into and used for purposes of infrastructure improvements. And again, I say, I believe that that defeats the purpose of the TAD in the Liberty District. So that's not all of my reasoning behind excluding South Commons, but like I said, I can live with either or, but I made those statements so council would ultimately be the decision maker here.
And Madam Mayor, pro tem, if I could comment related to that, and certainly I can, we can, we'll live with whatever your decision is, but I'd really like to see us not limit ourselves. In other words, you know, if TAD funding is going to be used in Sixth Avenue Liberty District TAD at some future date, it would have to come back before this council for a vote. None of that money could be used on infrastructure or in the Liberty District proper without your approval. And so if you say at this point that you're gonna exclude South Commons, then I think, you know, if there is an emergency at some point down the road and TAD funding is available, we've cut ourselves out of that opportunity for that funding resource for infrastructure. By leaving it in, you could still, at some point, decide that administratively, you're not, the council is not going to approve use of TAD funding in South Commons. But then if there is an occasion, an emergency, that you need to, at least that option is there. If you take it out now, that option will not be there. And I'd ask you to just think about that.
Well, and that's correct, but that's, again, is the purpose and the reasoning behind it. I think the TAD is being created to promote economic development in the Liberty District, not to deal with emergency requests, or emergency needs, or infrastructure needs for the city in that general area, although it was stated that they could be used. But I wanted to make that point, in the Liberty District, I'm not talking about in the other TAD districts, that you're gonna have a limited, in my opinion, out of all the TADs, you're gonna have a limited source of funding. And if it's used for other purposes, like infrastructure improvements, you're gonna be limiting what you can do in other areas of the Liberty District, so.
No doubt, Counselor. I'm just simply saying you can decide at that
I'm just making that point, that's all.
Because it has to come back before you.
Right. But I respect your opinion on it, and, you know, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands.
Sure.
Counselor Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I agree with the philosophy and the heart of the comments made by Counselor Davis, because I, you know, right now, it's hard to see around the next corner, obviously, but right now, I can't imagine a time when I would vote for a plan that gave the city TAD proceeds, being as we don't contribute anything from a tax perspective to the TAD fund. But I don't know. I mean, maybe there's something that comes up that by improving infrastructure, either immediately adjacent to or connected to one of those, one of those facilities, that actually spurs development somewhere, somewhere just right down the road, that is a benefit. So I'm really, I really don't carry the weight. I'm comforted by the fact that any project is ultimately determined by this council, whether or not it's gonna be pursued, regardless of where it is in the district. You know, but I agree, I don't have a problem if we cut one or both of those out, I really don't. But if they're in, and we were to dispose of one or more of those parcels, then they might be a good target for TAD dollars. So I just can't see us voting any, any TAD resources to a facility that's not paying into the, into the taxes, so.
All right. Counselor Huff.
I too am on the same page, and wanted to request a fourth option to exclude South Commons and Golden Park, because the original lines were there at Victory Drive, going back into the Liberty District. And I don't understand a lot of things at this point, but on this particular issue, we have to figure out a way as a city how to run our facilities. And the TAD funding has, I don't think, any, in that area, as Counselor Davis said, it's been hard enough trying to get a plan together, a developer together, trying to get things going in that area. So all funding is needed to stay inside the Liberty District. So I would ask, when you come back, if you could create a fourth option to exclude Golden Park and South Commons, please. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Counselor Huff. Did you?
Okay. Director Jones. Alternative one says without South Commons, including Golden Park. And they're telling me this is the option, but that's not what it says.
This is really alternative four. Excluding Golden Park and all of South Commons. We take it, just take it out of the mix altogether.
Okay, that's which option? Alternative?
I think it's alternate one, I believe, what we call it. Yes, it's alternate one.
Alternative one says without South Commons, including Golden Park.
Include, yes.
And, oh, the common should be and.
I guess so. I mean, if that, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
We're taking out Golden Park and South Commons under this alternative.
Okay, well, I need the common replaced by an and.
Okay. I can fix that.
Okay, 'cause I mean, at this point in time, everything counts. Okay. The, so we'll get this in an email or new ECA?
Yes, we can certainly provide that, these maps to you by email as well. That's not a problem.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
The mayor pro tem wanted to know, which one did Counselor Woodson say that she wanted?
Number two.
Number two. It's number two. All right. Let's see, we have Counselor Thomas.
It seems like every time we have this conversation, I learn something new about TADs and redevelopment districts. As I understand, Mr. City Manager, what we're talking about here, if, if we included South Commons and Golden Park in the redevelopment district, then probably we are not gonna do a TAD, we're not gonna do a project that covers South Commons and Golden Park. That's city property, and I don't, I don't know, Mr. Blakely may be able to help, that it would even be eligible for a TAD project. But what, by leaving it in, what it does do is the requirement that says you have to spend TAD dollars in the redevelopment district would give us the option of using TAD dollars for some infrastructure project or whatever. But as with everything else in this, as I believe we have been told, everything has to come back to this council for approval. So if we were to make infrastructure improvements, it would have to come back to this council for that to be approved. But if South Commons and Golden Park are not included in the redevelopment district, then the option of using TAD dollars is no longer there. Is that, is that a correct statement?
Absolutely. And that's the exact point that I've tried to make, leave your options open. And that would be my recommendation, but we'll be guided, but, you know, it's, we don't know what's going to come up 20 years from now at South Commons. We've got softball complex down there, of course. It's the citizens' complex, and so, you know, I just don't see it as city, because its economic impact, it's a city's facility, and 20 years from now, if there's a challenge in revenue and you have a TAD resource sitting there that could further the economic development opportunity for Columbus, it's there. If it's not included, it's not there, it's not an option. You threw that tool away 20 years ago.
So it seems to me that the question that we need to answer is, shall we give ourselves that option or not?
Yes. And you're still, should you give yourselves, ourselves that option or not? And even if you give it to yourself, you don't have to use it, is my point.
As I said, every time we talk about this, there's something.
But I'd rather be caught with the option
Absolutely.
than caught without the option.
Thank you.
Is my only point.
All right. Anything further? Oh, yes, Counselor Huff.
Is it not an option also to add it at a later date?
Well, you'd have to go back through a process and do, yeah, it creates a whole new dynamic. I can't answer that question. I think Ken Blakely could better answer that question about adding it at a different date. Mr. Blakely, if you don't mind responding to that.
Good morning. The law does allow you to amend the boundaries. You can add property or subtract property in the future. The one fly in the ointment is that when you do that, whatever year you make that change, you then have to bring the tax base up to that year. You restart it, basically, at that year. So if you had any existing obligations, it becomes really complicated. And if not, you lose all the increment that you, let's say you created it in 2016, and then in 2020 you amended it, you effectively lose all the increment you acquired from 2016 to 2020, 'cause you'd have to reset it in 2020. So as a rule, generally, we don't see many amendments. You can do it, it's possible, but it's pretty rare around the state.
'Cause I had heard in a lot of our discussions, that some of the boundaries could possibly add on at a later date, 'cause we've approved one TAD already.
You can add or subtract.
That they were looking at possibly adding at a later date. So I wanted to know the difference in the one that we approved and what we're talking about.
It would be the exact same, the one approved and the others. The only wrinkle, again, is when you make that change, you then reset the tax base to the year you make that amendment. So if you have an area that isn't changing very much, doesn't, doesn't have much of an impact, but if you have an area that's either declining or growing, then that could be of significant impact. So generally, I would say, you know, 90% of the time, we don't see them amended. We have, there are a few examples that have been amended.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
If I may?
Yes.
Just, you know, this is your vote, but just one comment. All of you remember, I guess, we completed about two years ago, the flood abatement issue on Sixth Avenue.
Thirty-seven million dollars.
Thirty-seven million dollars. The main trunk line goes through the South Commons. So if you recall, the whole, basically, the parking lot by the stadium, the football stadium was shut down. If, for some reason, in 10 years from now, there's an issue with that, and it costs a lot of money to deal with it, if the South Commons is in the TAD district, there would be funds available. If, if the increment has grown, there'd be funds available to deal with that. Just, just a thought.
All right. Counselor Huff.
My question at this point is, somebody help me with this, Mr. Blakely, someone. In a city putting our budget together annually, and the money set aside for infrastructure needs, what's the difference in the TAD district having the monies to do the infrastructure projects and the city having the money to do the infrastructure projects?
It's just basically an option. The, you know, the boundary of the TAD is two things. One, it's an area you hope to generate property tax increases, that's where you get the revenue from, and it's also where you want to spend the money. So for example, we've had cases in cities that say, well, the bulk of where we're gonna generate the money is in these four blocks, but we want to connect the streetscape along Fifth Avenue, whatever street it is. So we may want to go in other two blocks. We don't really think a lot's gonna happen in those two blocks, but we want to be able to finish the streetscape, so they'll include that area. It just gives you the option in the future to potentially use it, doesn't obligate you to use it. You might say, gee, we can raise our infrastructure money cheaper through city bonds than we can through TAD, we'll use the city bonds. So it's just a tool that you'll have in your toolkit, and maybe you just decide, you know, we're not, we're gonna use the other approach. But if you don't include it, you can't spend the money. The basic rule of TADs is you can't spend the money generated in a TAD outside its boundary. And so you're just trying to allow where you think there's a chance you may want to use it, having that option in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And Counselor Henderson.
But just one quick point, though. We do have, as y'all outlined, as a tool for us to be able to kind of change the TAD and reset the baseline. We could, if we saw that there might be a need, or there might be an opportunity to develop those streets. If we could come back and alter that plan in the future, it just wouldn't take effect until January 1 of the next year.
That's right. You could reset the base for that, whatever year that was.
But it would reset the base. So if we did that, we'd want to identify that opportunity early in the process and not several years down the road when there's been a collection of TAD monies, and then move the line again, right?
Yeah, the, if, if the TAD's generating significant increment that you're using for other projects or whatever, then you tend to not want to reset the base. If you're sitting there and you really haven't spent anything, the district's there and you're a couple of years into it, Gwinnett did this, then they reset the base, wasn't a big deal.
And the only reason I bring that up is 'cause this is, we're just into March, and as these things get approved, and we start working this year, and you guys start identifying potential projects, if something comes before us that is dependent upon a very successful and contiguous streetscapes, as, to use your example, then we could re-figure that probably before the year is out, and we wouldn't lose any real time, because the projects wouldn't be able to be evaluated until 17 anyway.
Yeah, and if you got it done before the end of the year, it would still be the 2016 base.
Counselor Davis.
Well, Madam Mayor, I yield unless there's any other council members.
No, there's none at this time.
Well, to get this, get this ball rolling, so to speak, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve alternative two, and if it's not approved, then I'll put one out on the table to see what council members want to do. And this is just a vote to establish the districts, or, excuse me, to amend the district, the Liberty District TAD. I make a motion to accept alternative or alternate two that would exclude Golden Park.
Okay. And that's a second by the mayor pro tem, and we have discussion from Counselor Henderson.
No discussion, just clarification. This is simply to allow staff to identify which one to bring forward for the vote in two weeks.
Pop's wanted you to repeat it, Counselor Davis.
My intention is to get this voted, so what I'm proposing is to amend the Liberty District TAD, and what is on the table is alternative two that would exclude Golden Park. And if that doesn't pass, my intention is to put alternative one out for a vote.
Okay. All right. And then we had a second, I believe, from, yes, the mayor pro tem, that's correct. And there's no further discussion, so that, again, this is just on the boundaries. All those in favor of choosing option, what is it, Counselor Davis again? Counselor, it's option two. Please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Unopposed. Tony, you got that? All right. Counselor Thomas, did you have an opportunity to confer with the city attorney? Do we want to hear from the city attorney on that matter, or we want to leave it to where we're going to run past the?
Well, we can
Yeah, why don't you just tell counselors what's going on?
We'd prefer just to bring these back for an official vote next week while we're in this 45-day window under the TAD statute, but that would be the only business item. We can delay the zonings until the Fourth Tuesday. Is that all right?
Okay, so as I understand it, what you shared with me just a moment ago was we need to bring to council's attention, if we don't vote on this next week, then we will have to reissue a notice and wait another period of time, is that right?
No.
Okay. Okay, so, Councilor Thomas.
And I don't have a problem with waiting another period of time. I mean, uh...
Well, we don't want to start over.
So what is the, tell us what the ramifications are, so council can make a decision.
We need to vote next week so we can stay within all the statutory windows. The last notice goes this week on the TADS, so it'd be preferable to vote next week, and we can delay any other zoning matters till the Fourth Tuesday.
Okay. Yes, let's see, we've got Councilor Thomas, then Councilor Barnes, and then Councilor Allen. Yes, ma'am.
If we have absolute, I promise on, you know, whatever penalty or whatever, that this is the only thing that's going to be added to that agenda. We were, we were really adamant about allotting the time to talk about what's going on in Parks and Rec. And if you promise me that this is absolutely it, and you're not going to say, oh, and we've got one other little thing we need to talk about, you know, I, I'm, I'm willing to let's go that way, but it, it really was that it was to be devoted strictly to Parks and Rec.
Well, and more specifically, Aquatic Center.
Aquatic Center.
I mean, all I intend to bring next week.
We understand.
Is an aquatic center discussion, and if this is added, it would be the only other thing that we're going to be talking about.
This would be the first item up, just for a vote.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's see then, we had Councilor Barnes, did you have something, and then Councilor?
In conversation with Councilor Allen, I think I missed what the heck was going on to vote. I'm in opposition to that Option 2. That would have been my vote. Option 2, yeah.
Okay.
We were, that's what happened.
Okay, okay. Tiny, can you record that? Is that a proper?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, and then now we have Councilor Allen.
I was trying to get on there.
Oh, trying to get on that for that purpose? Okay, so, do we have to take a revote to put it on the, no, we can just get, is, I guess there's a consensus that we'll bring that one item, which will be the voting on the TAD, the three TAD proposals back next Tuesday for a vote? Okay. All right. Mr. City Manager?
Well, I think that concludes the discussion about TADS today, so thank you guys for coming. Did you have any other comments?
I'm good.
Good? Thank you for coming. See you next Tuesday, 9:00.
Council Baker, did you have something before the City Manager continues on?
Yeah, it's not the boundaries.
Sure.
And, and Mr. City Attorney, I asked a while back if you would get with Mr. Jones and just take a look at something to bring back for council's discussion about updating the policies and procedures that addresses other tax incentives and abatements in the TAD areas in addition to the TAD financing and see if we could make sure there was a prohibition against those or elimination of those. So you wouldn't...
As far as what, what else might be out there?
Well, yeah, I just wouldn't want somebody to come in on top of a TAD and then apply for some type of tax abatements because we couldn't afford to double incentivize, if you will.
Won't be any double dip.
And the only reason I ask that is I just happened to run across something from the Development Authority of the day on a piece of property, and I don't know if it was inside one of the potential TADS or not, but their boilerplate language in their document mentioned tax incentives and tax abatements. So they need to be updated on whatever language, if this council changes it.
Okay.
Good point.
Thank you.
All right. Councilor Davis?
And Mayor, that brings up a good point, and we, we talked about that in the past, and I, I view this somewhat as, as in the future. I'm a little concerned about the staff that we have being able to handle these requests and being able to thoroughly go through them. And we somewhat talked about the need of, if, if we're going in this direction, then what I would call like a lone officer, somebody who could get in and explore these things and understand exactly the concerns of what Council Baker talked about. But there's, there's other incentives out there as well that developers are going to be participating in, and, and I think that you would want to try to understand to what level developments are going to be incentivized in these areas. So that's a very valid point as to the, as to the question of how many tools are going to be allowed to be used by developers.
Well, I hate that Ken Blakely left because I believe that there, there are some that are not allowed once you have a TAD. So, see, that would be really good information. Does anybody know that? Can anybody catch Ken? Is he? My memory's fuzzy, so I, you know, I will make this as a referral for you all, but, but I believe once you have a tax allocation district, you cannot have, what is, it's not an enrichment zone.
Enterprise.
Enterprise zone, for instance. So, you know, that's my vague recollection, and that's a great question for Ken. So I think there are some, there are some you can add and pile on, and there's some you can't add and pile on. But I think it's a very good point that Councilor Baker makes and, and Councilor Davis reiterates, which is, you know, we need to change all of our contracts with all of our authorities and all of our partners so that we don't end up in a situation where we've offered multiple incentives. So, just something forward-looking for our staff, too, to know.
And Mayor, if we, if he can't catch him, I think you were calling him, and if he can't catch him, we'll consider it a referral and get Ken Blakely to respond to that question.
Yeah, and, and one thing, just to add, during, during your due diligence on every project, you will be able to quiz the applicant, the applicant on what other incentives they have, and if it's contrary to what you think is right, you don't have to approve the project for it. But we'll get with Ken to, to see if we can get a better answer, but...
Okay.
We appreciate this opportunity, and just want you all to think about that when opportunity comes, it's too late to prepare, and that's all we're trying to do, is help our community be prepared for opportunities. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Madam Mayor, I'll move on with the rest of my agenda. I've got a contract between the city and Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia for the UGA Cooperative Extension. We have worked, had this agreement with them for more than 30 years, and, and this is a continuation of the agreement, but just in a slightly different way, where the money would pass through the Regents, and then they will bill us for the partial parrotishare of salary of one of the extension agents. So we're requesting the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia on behalf of University of Georgia Cooperative Extension Service and Columbus Consolidated Government to enter into a contract to pay salary optional retirement and social security and medical costs for the county extension agent. The employee, as I said, is currently paid a portion from the city and a portion from UGA. And so after March 1, of course, if you approve this, the employee will be paid by UGA, and the city will be billed for the city portion. So there's no difference if, Pam tells me that there's a few dollars less that would cost us because of the retirement system, but it's money that we are currently paying in a relationship that we've done for more than 30 years.
All right. I heard a second, I, so I assume there was a motion. Councilor Henderson with the motion. There is no discussion, so I will queue it for electronic vote. You may record your vote. All right, and it does pass.
Next, I've got the Bicycle Columbus. They're providing a donation to the city. It's a...
We got a motion for approval and a second. Hold on just a second, let me, it's a, would you like to say something? We've got a few votes here.
Let me, let me just say that it's $1,020, and it's for 30 road signs that display the state's three-foot pass for bicyclists riding on roadways. They were, are being generous enough to donate that money to us, that we can then turn around and purchase those signs, install those signs, and make the pathways safer. And so we have kept Logan here and from the city, and Trip Leyfield, who's a citizen, and that's the sand that they would be, we would be purchasing and installing. You don't have to say anything, but we appreciate the money, and, and you, when you pay money, you have a right to say something.
Thank you for accepting our donation.
Well, and you're more than just a citizen to us, Trip.
Thank you.
No, seriously, thank you for what you did. We appreciate it. Anything else? Okay, we've got Councilor Henderson, yes.
Well, and while we, while we have Trip here, I would, I would love your input on this. This is completely unrelated to this topic, and I apologize for stepping into the middle of your agenda, but I noticed that, I'm pleased to see we're getting a lot of the bike lanes striping put in so that we've got a very clear delineation on where people are supposed to be as they share the roads and different methods of transportation. But I got to confess, as I went down 10th, I, that was one striping that I just thought, man, that looks like a recipe for disaster for both the bikers and the automobiles. It looked to me like the, the bike lane is on the inside, then they've put parking spaces right next to that, and then there's the road. So I was thinking, that means if somebody with a passenger parks, he could wipe out a car and a biker at one time, both of them opening the doors. It just seemed to me like it's safer to put the parking all the way on the edge in the, the cyclists, the cyclists that are already comfortable sharing the road on the inside. I, I don't know. I, I'd be interested in your feedback. Y'all have seen it in other communities.
You, you're talking about 10th Street?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Henderson, as with everything, there's multiple opinions, and I, I will give the, I will give the city planning department and the traffic engineering department credit. I mean, they came to all of the interested parties, gathered opinions, of which there were several.
Right.
And, and ended up adding the infrastructure as you see it striped. You know, my personal opinion is that some infrastructure there is better than none at all.
Right. I agree.
So from that standpoint, we're, we're happy to see that the cities put the infrastructure in place.
So you, y'all didn't have any opinion then on where it should be, how it should be configured? You, you, you wanted that particular configuration?
When, when you say me, Bicycle Columbus.
I'm sorry, the bicycling community.
Bicycle, Bicycle Columbus, I'm a, I'm a volunteer board member of Bicycle Columbus, an advocacy organization here in town, one of many that are involved in the numerous activities that are currently underway. Path Foundation, Community Foundation, Gale Studio, the Planning Department, Traffic Engineering Department. Doc Dorsey did come to a Bicycle Columbus board meeting and present to us options, and yes, we did an express, we did express an opinion to him, and based on the options presented to us, we did support the options, the option that Doc brought to us that I think ultimately ended up on 10th Street.
Like I said, I was just curious, as I went through there, it just, I had never seen that configuration, not just here, but in other communities where they're active, actively, you know, promoting bicycling. All right, thanks.
Okay. Go ahead.
If you see Councilor Henderson driving on 10th, get out of the way.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you. All right, well, I think we've still got to take the vote, so don't go anywhere, you never know. All right, we can, you can record your votes electronically.
Um...
All right, and it does pass.
Actually, have three grants. The Georgia Local Workforce Development Agency Strategic Programming Grant. There's an Operation Workforce Transition and Military Assistance Grant for $300,000.
Got a motion and second for approval. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please record your vote by pressing green. If you're opposed, press red. Thank you. It passes.
And, and I do want to say that this grant is for the expansion of career services and innovative workforce development programs for transitioning service members, veterans recently transitioned their spouse and children. I figure Council Barnes would be happy to hear the rest of that story, and there's no local match required for these three grants. The second grant is for ex-offenders and from the same organization.
All right. We've got a motion and a second, and there appears to be no discussion. You may record your votes electronically.
And that's $125,000 with no local match.
And it, I think we are missing one more. Is that it? Okay, yeah, there we go. We're good. Thank you. Okay.
And the next grant is the Go Build, Go Build Georgia Pre-Aprenticeship. It's $75,000, and it's for, to expand basic and employability skills, in-demand employment training, and innovative workforce development programs for high school seniors eligible for dual enrollment and considered low income and deficient in basic literacy skills. And there's no local match.
Got a motion and a second for approval. There appears to be no further discussion, and you may record your vote electronically.
And then we've got purchases. First is a replacement vehicle, vehicles for the Columbus Police Department. It's three Chevrolet Tahos, two-wheel drive.
Got a motion and second to approve item number A, which is self, Chevrolet Tahos, two-wheel drive police pursuit vehicles pursuant to the Georgia State Contract. Seeing no discussion, you may record your votes electronically. It passes.
May I have one more suggestion? We can break these out and I'll do...
Okay.
B through G will be approved.
Okay. We've got a motion, a second, that B through G be approved, and Mr. City Manager, if you would, please just read each one.
B is new vehicle for Columbus Police Department. It's a 2016 Ford 150 truck. C is washer extractor for Muskogee County Jail. It's a replacement. D, geotechnical and environmental testing services, annual contract. E, treatment providers for mental court and veterans' court, annual contract, and amend a contract term for elevator maintenance service, and then a change order for South Lumpkin Road multi-purpose trail.
Okay. So that was a motion and second to approve those stated items, and there is no discussion, so you may record your votes electronically. It passes. Those pass.
Moving into updates, we've got the Finance Monthly Update by Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge.
We've got Councilor Davis. Like to.
Ms. City Manager, before we go into the updates, could you have the staff look into a, it, it just seems like there's a, a problem that seems to be unfriendly to business in our community, and what I would ask you to do is to have staff, including the legal department and all those associated, if they could come up with a more of a streamlined version of the requirements and the guidelines, step by step maybe, of, of what it takes to start a food truck business? And in looking at that, if there needs to be some things, and I'll, I'll put this in a formal refer, if there needs to be some things that need to be worked on, I'd like to bring that discussion back up, or I'd like to have that discussion again. There's been numerous requests, but we're not seeing, we don't seem to be making any progress. And mainly in those discussions with business owners, prospective business owners, they always talk about, it doesn't matter who they talk to, they get a different story from each person. So it just occurred to me that we find a better way to streamline this process, so if a business wants to do it, we can just give them a sheet of paper, and they'll know exactly what to do. I don't want to make it sound that easy, but you understand what I'm, you understand what I'm saying. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Pam?
Good morning.
Good morning. I apologize for my voice this morning. This is our January 2016 report. This was delayed from the last meeting. The general fund, .2%, .34%. The local option sales tax is down 1.14%, but we have collected February's, and it was lower than last year. So we're at year-to-date, at the end of February, 1.91% down from last year. The other local option sales tax fund, which includes interest, this is showing down .98%. After February, it's down 1.82%. So we had further reduction this past month. The stormwater fund, basically even at .42%. Paving fund, down .30%. Medical center, up .56%. Integrated waste, down negative six, or .67%. E-911, down .33%. And you can see that most of these funds are basically at the same point where we were last year. Economic development, up 1.58%. Debt service, up 5.98%. And this is due to the addition of the GMA lease program, so there's an additional revenue from the other loss for the tax assessor system. Transportation, up 2.78%. Parking management, up 37.73%, and that's due to the fact the parking fines went up from $20 to $30. And if you notice on parking management, as well as the rest of the funds going forward, which are enterprise funds, revenue for parking management is $168,000, and expenditures were at $178,000. So real close to breaking even for parking management. Trade Center Fund, up 16.76%. And again, when you look at revenues compared to expenditures, the revenue's at $1,444,000, and expenditure's at $1,448,000. So really close, within $4,000. Bull Creek, down 1.62%. Bull Creek's revenue at $621,000, and expenditure's at $698,000. So about a $70,000 difference in revenues and expenditures. OXCO, down 13.49%. And as you can see, the spread a lot greater, revenues at $114,000, and expenditures at The Civic Center Fund, revenues up 36.47%. Revenues at $2.9, just under $3 million, and expenditures at $3.2 million. So within about $250,000 difference in revenues and expenditures for the Civic Center. The Health Insurance Fund, down 10.87%. Remember that the Muskogee Manor is no longer on our plan, which accounts for the majority of this change in revenue. Revenues at 10.8, and expenditures at 13.3. But now we're getting into the portion of the, of the year where the deductible kicks in, so we'll see how that tracks going forward. If you look at the expenditure report at the end of January, most departments are within budget. There are a few that are exceeding budget, and there are explanations provided for those, some of those being the City Council. But their annual dues for GMA and ACCG are due once a year, not prorated out over the month, so there's no issue with City Council. The City Attorney's, the litigation budget, defending over $12 million in claims, that's exceeded the budget this year. Employee benefits, the annual contribution for death benefit, major disability is a one-time payment, and so that's, no issues with employee benefits. The jury manager has a subscription that's due at the beginning of the year, which has caused that to be over the budget, but no issue for the remainder of the year. And the public defender, the monthly contract, is paid in advance, so it's showing them a little bit over where they should be, but that's expected. And on the other local option sales tax, which we've talked about briefly, their revenues are down .98% this year. After last month, next month, it'll be 1.82%. But the report indicates by department how much has been expended in each of the different departments and agencies of the local option sales tax. And I've also provided the report on the infrastructure projects for the other loss. On the TSPLOST discretionary, we're averaging about $217,000 a month. This fiscal year, we've collected 1.3 million for a six-month period of time. So we're right on track to meet the budget, or exceed the budget of $2.5 million for discretionary for this fiscal year. The current projects have been allocated as Boxwood Boulevard Bridge Replacement, the Victory Drive Improvements and Resurfacing. And we'll be bringing back that project list that was talked about a few meetings ago for additional approval, so we can move forward with additional TSPLOST discretionary projects. We've collected 7.4 million to date in discretionary funds, allocated 2,755. So we have a balance of 4.7 that has not been approved as a project, and those will be coming back to Council at the next meeting. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Huff?
Question. I had asked Council to consider assisting me. We, the speed table list, there's a list out there. But I have an emergency request, and I'm just trying to figure out how to get it done. We've had another accident since I reported the last one, where the car crashed into the house for about the third or fourth time. This time, it luckily hit the phone pole. Yeah, it did not end up in the yard. So I'm assuming they are racing or something from Old Casita Road down into the neighborhood. And traveling around town, I went around Columbus last week to kinda get into areas that had speed tables, you know, had long stretches of road. And I just need, you know, your assistance and the Council's assistance to look into this and see if we can move it up and get it done.
And we did have traffic calming on the allocation of the projects that we brought at the two meetings ago. And the ones that we have currently on the list, and I don't know if your particular project is currently, has currently been evaluated and on the list, but we would have funding available in the next two years to pay for those that are currently on the list. And we can look at the one that you're referring to and make sure it's on the list.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And also, Mr. Huff, if you will text me that address, I know we've talked about it several times, but I will get it to the chief in the interim and ask that we have motor patrol there, okay? Counselor Davis?
Yes, Ms. Hodge, could you tell me off a, kind of a random question here, but what does the city, what has the city budgeted this year for fuel costs, both gasoline and diesel? Do you, do you have any idea what the city?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but we can provide that to you.
Is that, that's established in the budget across the board, though, right? I don't know.
That's correct.
When, when you're going through the budget process, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Anything else for Pam? Okay. City Manager?
We'll move on. The next topic is insurance service organization building code grading effectiveness. And Deputy City Manager Hodge is going to give that report, that update, to you as well.
And this is just to bring Council up to date. Every five years, ISO evaluates the building code effectiveness grading schedule. And this is not to be confused with the ISO for fire. There are two completely separate evaluations. The insurance companies use this to evaluate policies for homeowners. They, they look mostly at the ISO fire. And what our understanding is, is this used to play a much bigger part in the evaluation of homeowner insurance, as far as building codes are concerned. Not so much now. They're looking mostly at the ISO fire. But we wanted to give you the update. We've been evaluated, and where we've changed, and what our plan is to improve that evaluation. And again, the purpose of ISO, assesses the building codes that are in effect, emphasizes the requirements designed to mitigate losses from natural hazards, and to make sure that the community's classification is evaluated every five years. And I've notated at the bottom on almost every slide that this is not to be confused with the ISO fire rating. These are completely separate ratings. There's been no change to the ISO fire rating. This would only impact residential and commercial going forward after January 1, 2016. It's an advisory rating agency for the property and casualty insurance industry, and it's a credit-only program. What our residential rating, we are currently at a five. We were previously a two for residential. Just to give you an idea, the scoring, we had 64.47 points in 2015. In 2010, we had 85.34. And we'll kinda walk through, and I think I've passed out that information to you, but we'll kinda walk through the differences in the ratings. In commercial, we were previously a three, and now we're a four. And the scoring difference is 73.53 versus 81.83. And this just shows the table of the classifications to show you that as a 64.47, we are a half, half a point away from being a four. So we're very close to that next range. And this is before the new classifications. And you can see that the light colored is the personal lines, and the darker color orange is the commercial lines. And before, we were a one, we were a, sorry, we were a two and a three. So the, the only person in the, or only municipality in the state of Georgia that was a two was the city of Columbus. And we were one of two in the commercial rating. And now we're at a four and a five, which is basically within the average of the rest of the state of Georgia. And this just shows the national comparison, that there are very few twos and threes, and that the majority is fours and fives, which is currently where we're at. The areas of evaluation, they look at the administration of code, the plan review, and the field inspections. And John Hudson is here, if you've got any questions specific to this and how our rating is as well.
Okay. And we have a Counselor, we have a question from Counselor Allen.
Okay. This is, even though it's ISO and it's same as the fire rating, it's, it's measuring our ability to properly conduct the Office of Building and Code. Just a measurement on that office, is that what this is?
It's a measurement on that office compared to other municipalities in the state and the nation.
All right. But it does affect commercial property insurance rates?
Our understanding is that, and from the ones that we've talked to, the majority of them look at the fire ISO rating, and not so much this. They used to in the past. This used to play a much important role in the evaluation, but not so much anymore.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. John, or, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Pam.
The, the major areas of difference between 2010 and 2015 was the building official certification, the training and certification of the staff. And with higher turnover of seasoned employees over the last five years to retirement and better paying private opportunities, and then the use of checklists. So we went back and looked at their evaluation for 2010 and the evaluation for 2015, and really looked at the major changes in how we were rated prior to 2015. And these were the three things that are really the main differences.
What is use of checklist?
Let's see, hold on.
What they're looking for is, when you go out to do an inspection, you have a checklist that you actually check off. I did these things when I was there. They were really looking for those types of checklists.
Go on, Shulley.
And we do have an example of.
And they're more that you have those?
Yes, they wanna see those in the file. And they want to know that the inspectors are using that list.
And that's for, this is our typical checklist for residential inspections. So we go through our footing inspections, our foundations, our framing inspections. The, we have them on file, but a lot of times with our inspectors, every job is different. So if you go in depending on a checklist, and if there's something outside of this checklist that is wrong, we don't wanna train the inspectors just to only focus on the checklist. So they are there, we have for residential and commercial, and it's just, we have to show them that we have checklist, which we do. So it's not, it's not anything that we didn't have or didn't have before, because this is before I came aboard, it was already here. So it's just providing information to ISO.
So you've always operated with the checklist?
Yes, sir. Because that's a, that's a old, that was typed up way back when. It's just, it's in the books, and everyone has it.
And so our plan, and this is really what John and I have kinda worked on just over the last several months, is to improve our rating. Obviously, we hate to see that our rating decline from a prior rating. Is to obtain the CBO certification for the inner director. He has passed two of the three parts. He has one more part to take, and that will be in April. So that will make the changes.
And he passed them both on the first try?
He did pass the first two parts, the harder parts on the, on the first try. So he has one more part left to take, and that will be next month. And also to develop a certification training plan for each staff member. That was one of the things that we saw in comparing the prior year, is how many certification and, and training classes that prior inspectors who had been there a very long time had earned over time. So what we wanna do is develop that certification plan for each staff member, not just to improve our rating, but to provide that training for the staff and to provide a better service to the citizens. And implement fully the residential and plan review checklist to make sure that they're in the file for each inspection. And then to request ISO to do a reevaluation in 2016. We feel that we can implement these changes by the end of this year and have them come back and do a reevaluation. They typically do that every five years, but they will come back at your request. And we do think that our evaluation will change, maybe not back to where it was before, but definitely improve to where it is right now. And so we just wanted to give you an update of that evaluation that we had from ISO, and answer any questions that you might have.
Counselor Allen?
I wanted to follow up on your point about the certification training plan. I know we had a few employees that left because of certain certifications had not been met. Have, have we filled those positions? And are those who have, are filling those positions, are they certified?
Yes. We, we just brought on, well, in my position, like I said, I have one more test to have to certify for a certified building official. All of my plans examiners and all of my current existing inspectors have their certifications. We have two that are coming up this year, and then they have that timeline to get their certification. And with, we just hired a new, that'll be coming aboard, a new plumbing inspector. And then he has two years to earn his plumbing certification and three years to earn his mechanical certification. One of the biggest things is this, is a lot of trade guys that come in to become inspectors, they don't have these certifications. It doesn't benefit them in the private sector. So a lot of times coming in, they have some knowledge of the codes, but like I said, just to being tested on the actual letter of the code, they, they don't have that, and it doesn't benefit them before they come to the city. So we have timeline set in, and once they come in, they sign a sheet, understanding that they have the two years or three years, depending on what the certifications are, to, to get the certification. And it's a condition of their employment.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Anything else?
Next, we have the, Mr. John Williams, Deputy Chief Appraisal, and Steve Wise from Tyler Technologies, Inc. Council, last year or so, approved funding to upgrade our technology for Tax Assessor and Tax Commissioner. They have been They have been working and scheduled to go live January 1, 2017, I believe. They've been out in the field getting everything going and transferring from the old system, Oasis, to the IES world. We wanted you to kind of hear from them as to where they are with things. And so, John.
City Manager, thank you. You know me, I'm John Williams. This is Steve Wise. He is the On-Site Project Manager for what happens here in Columbus. Last time we were here, we had Mary Griffin, who is also Steve's boss, who was here. Don't need her today. We're well into it. I asked Steve to give us something that we could put up on one screen, a timeline that simplifies exactly what we're doing in this project and where we're at. We get the question often about why can't we know this? Why does it have to be 1-117? Why can't we get values earlier than that? So I thought the easiest way to do this is put it on a timeline, let Steve talk through the timeline with you as simply as we can, make it as, the least confusing as possible, and then we'll answer those questions. Steve?
Good morning, Council. As John stated, I am the Project Manager for Tyler Technologies overseeing the 2017 revaluation project for Muskogee County. John and I put a timeline together, as you can see on the board. Briefly, just to explain some of the target dates, the percentages complete as far as what we've completed so far, and then the stages of completion between now and project end at fruition. Basically, the project started January 1, 2015. We took the first three months of the project and, and shot all of the street-level images on every improved parcel within the county. From June through November 2015, the appraisal desktop verification ADV system was utilized and reviewed all, all the, all the parcels. ADV review resulted in thirty-five percent of the total parcel count requiring some type of edit or change that we had noticed. Of those edits, twenty-nine percent were simple data entry changes such as an improvement being added, or there might have been something that needed to be changed or removed from the parcel. Six percent of those edits required a field check. The edits are currently forty-five percent complete as of today, and those will all be completed and entered into the IES test site by the end of April 2016. The next four stages will be completed between a timeframe between April and June of 2016. We will analyze and validate all sales from 2014, 15, and 16, and only those sales that are bona fide arms-length transactions will be used to determine the market value. These verified sales then become the basis of our land valuation. Location factors are then established based on these land valuations and grouped into neighborhood boundaries. Cost tables are then built and calibrated using data collected from the sales analysis. Local, regional, and national cost data is utilized, and when available, newly constructed dwellings are also used to develop these tables. The next ten months will be spent developing property evaluations using the applicable approaches to value. Final review and valuation will be conducted by licensed Georgia appraisers to ensure quality, accuracy, uniformity, and equity throughout the county. These valuation results are presented to the Chief Appraiser for the county staff to review, who then deliver these values to the Board of Assessors for final approval sometime in May of 2017. Once all values are reviewed and approved by the Board, the annual notice of assessment is mailed to each property owner. The owner has forty-five days from the date of the notice to file an appeal to dispute their value. Tyler Technologies will be responsible for reviewing all the appeals from August through December 2017. Once appeals are complete, a massive, a mass appraisal report summarizing the reassessment project will be provided and delivered to the Chief Appraiser. So that kind of gives you a rough idea of the stages of the process that we have in the reassessment project. As you can see, based on our graph, we're roughly twenty-five percent or so finished with, with the first few stages of the project. We're in the, kind of the cleanup phase, so to speak. We're continuing to make those changes in the system into the test site, so.
Let me just correct that last statement. We're, that, that chart represents twenty-five, those green bars, that's twenty-five percent of the project is complete. So what he's done is convert all the data that we've had in Oasis to the new system. They've basically double-checked their cells to maintain accuracy. This data entry edits that we're in the process of doing should be finished by April, end of April. Steve, what was the number? I think, by my recollection, it's about thirty-three to thirty-five percent of the parcels that we looked at, both commercially and residentially, had some form of edit that was something in addition or subtraction of that parcel, as we had it. Could be a shed, could be an attached carport. Typically, something that doesn't require a permit, because we get permits on a regular basis, and so we know what's been added by permit almost always. If we don't, there's, there's been a flaw. But what he's picking up is things that don't necessarily require a permit, but they're there. We use a shed, for example. It's there, we see it on the aerial, he sends somebody out, takes a picture of it if we didn't get it first shot. And then we measure that and, and try to put that back in the system to be valued down the road and down the road in this project. The 1-117 date, that is an as-of date for the valuations of the properties here in the county. Currently, we have sixty-nine thousand five hundred and seven taxable real property parcels in the county. That doesn't include the H, or, I'm sorry, it does include what is known as the H account, that property that is over two acres for certain residential properties. Sixty-nine thousand five hundred and seven. Got that this morning, that's why I know exactly what the number is. Of those parcels, approximately, well, I've got the number exactly, it's thirty-five thousand fourteen. Thirty-five thousand and fourteen of those parcels have homestead exemption. It's about half, just slightly over fifty percent.
Give us the number one more time, I've got the sixty-five.
Well, and remember, I'm, I'm going to ask that he email.
Yeah.
That information to me, and then I can send it to you, because when I met with them, I was, I mean, they broke it all down.
Yeah.
For me, and I want you to have that information, and that's why I put them on the agenda.
Sure.
So I, you know.
Yeah, John, if you'd just give that number.
Yeah.
Sure. The, the homestead exemption at parcels, thirty-five thousand and fourteen.
Yeah.
The information you're speaking of, Mr. City Manager, we've got it in great detail. We've got that, that information in great detail. I, I didn't see it, and I apologize if that's exactly what you wanted. I can email that out when I get back to my office.
Yeah.
But they're very, very specific numbers. I'll send that to you as to what, what the percentages are that's been added.
Yeah.
But the question is, if we know the value on 1-117, why can't we know the value on 12-116? That 1-117 is an effective date for the values. We use sales all the way up into December to add to that effective date value at 1-117. But we don't know that value as of 1-117. That's just the date we look at the value of the property. We take the next five months to churn that information to the point where we can present it to the Board of Assessors for their approval. That's the board that you all elected. They're the ones that come up and say, that is the value of the property. My goal is one May. In previous years, it was end of May, even into June. So we're backing that up. This year was one of the earliest years we've had. We'll continue to try to push that back closer to the beginning of the year, but by and large, that's April and May timeframe. Then we send the notices out. Then every taxpayer or property owner has the right to appeal. So those values go through an appeal process, and we don't really know what the ending value will be until late in the year. So I hope that answers that one question about why can't we know it earlier? That is the effective date in the contract of those values, and we have to wait up to that point.
We have several counselors in queue, and John, I appreciate the process. Anything you can do to get that number, a number to us, a projected number to us earlier in the year, any given year, because it's really difficult to build the budget when we call and the response is, we have no idea. We don't know if it's zero, ten percent, we just have no idea.
Right.
And, and I know you guys then do try to drill down a little bit and get, and you've done a good job, but it would be nice to be able to have you give us a number earlier for budget purposes.
We will certainly know the digest number in, in sixteen, 2016, probably third quarter, usually July, August timeframe. Of course, that goes to the Commissioner's Office.
Yeah, sure.
And then they present that, but we'll have that sixteen number.
And we know it's a projection. That's not, we're not trying to, it's just, it's, it's hard to build a budget when we don't have a projection.
Sure.
So, Counselor Thomas.
Ms. Williams, it seems to me when we started talking about this, one of the things that we were told would be, that we would receive from this, is that there may be parcels that are not on the tax rolls. And I don't, I, I don't know enough about the terminology to know if we are to the point where some of those may have been identified. If we are, did we find a lot? I mean, I, I know that was one of the issues that was one of the concerns. Are we to that point yet in our, in your timeline?
We are, we are through with the field checks, which are part of that confirmation process. If, if, if there was a parcel out there, or dwelling, or some improvement out there that we had missed, by the end of our field checks, we've put our eyes on it. We're in the process of putting that information into the new system, and that's, that's that half, that forty-eight, fifty percent, that data entry edit. But Steve, you may be able to comment on whether we picked up something that we just didn't know about, an entire parcel, for example.
Right.
I'm unaware of that. It certainly would be a mistake on our part. Sometimes they're there and the process hasn't taken place to where we're actually seeing it and recording it. That may be months. But as far as missing something altogether, Steve, have you seen something?
Right. I, I mean, realistically, from a, from a county standpoint, from what I've seen so far, the county's records are fairly accurate for the most part. I think they do an excellent job with permits and getting those improvements and getting those additional dwellings or those additional, you know, type of structures picked up. I haven't really noticed anything as far as, when I'm looking at each individual parcel, I haven't noticed entire missing buildings for that matter, or as far as the new construction goes, like I said, and, and a majority, I would say a majority of those additions to the dwellings, sheds, porches, canopies, carport, maybe they might have enclosed a garage. For the most part, from what I've seen, those have been, been accounted for. You know, I have noticed some buildings that have been raised, you know, some improvements that we've removed from the parcels in certain areas, but for the most part, overall, I think that the county's doing a real good job acknowledging those improvements and listing those. Most of the things, as John mentioned, the improvements that we're finding are minimal in value. You know, sheds, small additions, maybe someone added a wood deck that they had not visited the property in previous years, and maybe they added it without a permit. You know, that happens quite a bit, where there, there will be things added without a permit. Those are the kind of things that we're, that we're finding.
And do you, in your experience in other communities doing the same kind of work, are we pretty much in line? I mean, we're, we're not, you're not finding lots more here than you would find somewhere else, are?
Oh, no, 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 no. That's why I said, from a, from a data standpoint, look at, now that we've had a chance to do a once-through with the data, the data's actually pretty good.
Good, good.
Considering the fact that you've only got thirty-five percent of all the, all the improved parcels in the county had anything remotely wrong with it, with some type of editor change that needed to be done to the parcel after we've done the once-over, is pretty, is pretty good.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to go back to the numbers again. The sixty-nine thousand five oh seven, I'm assuming that includes commercial, industrial, manufacturing properties.
Yes, sir. That number includes all real property.
All assessed properties. And then the thirty-five, when you send that email, if you could give me a little more detail on how you arrived at that number, is that the total residence?
That, that is a, and the thirty-five thousand fourteen, that is a 2015 number of how many homestead exemptions we have on real property. By and large, that's going to be residential.
Well, I wanted to know what the total residential properties are, and then how many are on homestead. That's what I was looking for.
Okay. So you want me to exclude the commercial?
Yes, please.
Well, I, I want a breakdown on everything, and then I'll give, you can do.
I'll make sure, I'll make sure that's included.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll make sure that's included.
On everything.
Just kind of looking to see, I mean, it, it, it's kind of fuzzy when you say sixty-nine five oh seven, and then thirty-five's roughly half have homestead, but that's not the total picture, and it's, it, we need to exclude the industrial, commercial, and that kind of thing to get a, the accurate picture of.
Right. And, because, because I want clarification, yeah, and I, I didn't bring my notes with me that I took when I met with you, but, but I recall, and Counselor Henderson was saying, based on garbage collection, we've got, but what I recall is, it seems like it was, there were fifty-three thousand residential properties. And you talked about the percentage of edits and, and all that, so I'd like a breakdown. Certainly, we have more than thirty-five thousand residential properties.
Oh, yes, sir. That's just with homestead.
But, and so I, I wanted to be clear that there's about fifty-three thousand, fifty-five thousand residential properties in Muskogee. And then he broke all of that down for me when I met with him, and so I want you to have.
Well, I, I would love to have that information, and if, if there's a way you could tell when that property changed, when the new owner took over, on those twenty-five, roughly twenty-five that do not have homestead, are they, are they in the queue, or they have to wait a year before they file for homestead, and that's?
We won't know the 2016 number of homestead until that deadline in April for '16, of course, but.
Well, okay.
As the City Manager said, we have it broke down, residential, commercial, industrial, residential condo. We have, we have it stratified pretty well.
If you want to wait until after the deadline to, to compile the information, that would be?
I'll give you what, what we have now.
Okay.
And then we can do it again.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. And Counselor Henderson.
Just a quick question. Do you also have access to how many of those residential properties are owner-occupied? Because I, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is what percentage of the non-homestead exemption are homeowners that have elected because they're residents in a state that doesn't pay state tax, or, but they've made a decision not to file for homestead? I'm just curious what that number is. You don't, you don't retain those numbers, do you?
I can't answer that question today, but I will find out the answer.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Let's see, we have Counselor Davis.
Good afternoon. I have a somewhat different request from you. I believe it'd be your department that would look into these matters, but could you provide for Council somewhat of a, I guess you can call it a, a management tool or just an understanding so we know what is, what, what the, the next several years are projected to be like? And you might want to get with the Finance Department and talk to them, they may have additional requests. But could you provide us a report specifically as it pertains to tax abatements and expiring, whether it's this year for the next five to ten years, so we can kind of get an understanding of what new revenue might be coming into the city and what we can expect? The other is a request, I'm not sure if you can do it or not, but could you provide, say, the last five years, I would prefer ten if you could do it, of the amount of land that's come off the tax rolls for, with the nonprofit organizations out there that, on the opposite side of the revenue that we've somewhat lost in, in property taxes?
Yes, sir.
You can do that?
I can.
Okay. That would be your department that works on that stuff?
It is. Matter of fact, the first that you asked for, we're in the process of doing now. It's a task that was given to me last week. So I'm, I'm working on that as we speak. And the second one you asked for, we've talked about it in the office before. I know it's some information that would be nice to have, but yes, sir, I can get that for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mayor, pretend.
I asked Richard Bishop a question, and I found out that if a nonprofit or a government agency like Columbia State has property, but they rent, receive rent for that property, then they have to pay property tax on it.
Ma'am, that, that is governed by law. When you have a tax-exempt property, regardless of who owns it, you look at the per- of who owns it, you look at the purpose of that exemption, and why they have it. And any additional land, it could be a church with a rental house. If, if that rental, or if that house is occupied by staff of that church, and that's part of their, their package for employment, that's not taxable. If they in turn rent that out for additional income that's not directly aligned with the purpose of their exemption, then that, that becomes something that has to be approved. And if it's not in accordance with the reason they're exempt, it's, it's going to be taxable.
Okay. I was surprised.
And that's a, that's a real quick summary on a, on a real thick law, so I hope that's okay.
Looks like that's it?
Well, and Madam Mayor and Counsel, my, my purpose really of meeting with Betty and John was in advance of, not this budget, but, well, partly this budget, but budgets going forward, because I was a bit anxious to see all this, these findings that were going to bring revenue to the city, of things that were not on the books. And, and a couple of things I learned from meeting with them is that there's great communications between our inspections and codes and permit, and permit system, and the tax assessor's office. They have access to permits that are pulled, where people are doing things, adding value to their property, and then they are on it. And, and what I found is that most of what they're finding out there was already on the books, and as he mentioned, there were, there are minor edits. And so I, I asked John and Betty for the bottom line, should we expect this considerable growth in revenue from this process? And, and he let me down when he told me no. And so I wanted you to have the benefit of his early report and early projection, that based on the minor edits, as he indicated, a shed, that they didn't show on the property, that's not going to add value, but minor edits, based on that, just at this point, we are not expecting, they are not expecting, that at the end of the day, there's going to be significant growth in the digest as a result of what we're doing. But, so I wanted you to know that now. And so if you're waiting and can't wait for January one, two thousand seventeen, when they switch the system over from Oasis to IES World, and the calculations occur, and you think it's going to be significantly more in IES World than in Oasis, it doesn't look like that's going to be the case. So I just wanted you to just know that early. And so we'll get you the information that he shared with me, and I took notes, and, so he'll give me the more current information. I met with them about a month ago, but I wanted to get them on the agenda to come and let you hear from them, and ask questions, and, and you walk away with a little bit more work to do.
Always. Yes, sir. Might I add, if I, if I can, when I told you we can't not anticipate a significant growth based on this project, what we do know is, we will have an extremely accurate assessment of every parcel in the county. So properties that we may not have seen for years, because they've been homesteaded, nothing's been added or removed from the property, it's just been there at its assessed value, we'll know as of one-one-seventeen exactly what every parcel is worth in the county. That alone, it, it makes our job an A-plus rating, just because we now know we're accurate. Somebody stood up here today and said our number, one of our primary objectives was to increase assessments. I'm sorry, that's not our goal. Our goal is to be accurate, uniform, fair, and equitable. So we don't lean either way. It is an accurate assessment that we're looking for, and that's what this is going to provide us. So that, that alone is, should be encouraging, because there should be values that were different when they were assessed compared to now.
Yeah. And, and just finally, let me say that when I met with Betty and John, I know that Betty Middleton is happy to have him, and, and, and I'm happy to have you on board, because he, he's, he's doing great work. So thank you for coming.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move to police pay reform. HR Director, Rita Hollis will.
And as Rita comes forward, I asked her to make this presentation, as you all remember, last year as part of the budget, we did a police pay reform to recognize longevity, and to encourage, to begin to address compression, and to encourage our valued men and women at the police department to stay with us within existing funds. And we made some projections as to how much that would cost us, and whether or not we would be within existing budgeted funds, and the news is good. And so Pam is going to make that presentation, I believe. And then I also asked Rita to conduct a broad study of police pay across many comparable jurisdictions, and she's going to present that information. Pam?
Yes, we looked at, when we were doing the police pay reform last fiscal year, one of the things that we projected was the amount of savings that we would have in other areas of the police department pay in order to provide the pay reform. Two components we looked at, one, one was overtime. And in the last two fiscal years, FY fourteen, overtime was five hundred and thirty-three thousand, and in FY fifteen was five hundred and sixty-nine thousand. FY sixteen, year-to-date, they've spent a hundred and two thousand, projected to be approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand for the end of this fiscal year, which is a savings of about four hundred thousand dollars, just in the overtime component. The other thing we looked at was court appearances. We budgeted a hundred and fifty-five thousand, which was what we budgeted over the last several years. To date, they've expended sixty thousand eight sixty-six, projected to be approximately a hundred thousand for this fiscal year, excuse me, which is a savings of fifty thousand. So the two savings between overtime and court appearances is about four hundred and fifty thousand, which is real close to what we had estimated in the police pay reform restructuring proposal that was approved by council in this fiscal year. So we're within fifty thousand of where we thought we would be for that police pay reform, and being able to pay for that out of existing dollars in the police department.
Thank you. Rita, do you want to walk us through this police survey, please?
Sure. The survey that Human Resources conducted in conjunction with the Columbus Police Department, we looked specifically at their pay and their benefits. Those were the primary things that we concentrated on. And there are parts of the survey that are very involved, so I won't go into very, all the details. This is just going to be at a very high level, but the report you have in front of you, that you can take and look at, and then certainly ask questions if there are additional questions that we've not answered in the, in the survey for you. First, just looking at where we are with the Columbus Police Department. Our city population at two hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four. There are four hundred and eighty-eight budgeted police officer positions. This is less fifty-three vacant position, and that number may be a little bit higher. It's etching closer to sixty vacant police officer positions right now. Other vacant, other budgeted positions include the nine-one-one center, and civilian positions within that department. Of those budgeted, four hundred and eighty-eight positions, this slide just shows a breakdown of how those positions are distributed via the ranks, in terms of the number of police officers, corporals, sergeants, lieutenants, captains, majors, and then certainly the chiefs. Police pay, the starting pay for a police officer with a high school diploma or GED is at thirty-six, seven, and associate's degree at thirty-seven, five, a bachelor's degree at thirty-eight, eight, and with a master's degree is at forty-oh-six. And this does include the loss that each sworn officer will receive. In addition to their base salary and the loss, there are other supplemental pays that the officers receive, and this is just a breakdown of that. That includes the sign-on bonus, and the pay reform that you all approved and was implemented in two thousand and fifteen also includes relocation expenses, as well as the education incentives. Police officers, sworn officers, also benefits include a take-home vehicle. In terms of promotion within the department, this shows their rank structure, basically, and how officers advance the career ladder, or advance in the department, and the upward mobility that's available to them. I won't go through that in any detail. You know, as I mentioned, it goes through the rank structure from sergeant, excuse me, corporal sergeant, command sergeant, lieutenants, captain, and major, and certainly up to the chief. So that's just the promotion career ladder for that department. This slide gives an overview of the turnover rate within the department. It's a look back at the past eight years, from two thousand and eight to two thousand and fifteen, showing the number of officers that were hired, retired, resigned, that were terminated, and deceased. Just looking at two thousand and fifteen, in two thousand and fifteen, forty-nine officers were hired, thirteen retired, fifty-four resigned and left for some other reason. One was terminated, one deceased, with a negative balance of twenty for that particular year. If we look at two thousand and eight through two thousand and fifteen, we see those numbers increasing. For example, in twenty, two thousand and eight, thirty-three left, and that number has continued to increase, as we said, to two thousand and fifteen, where a total of sixty-nine officers actually left the department. When officers leave the department, there's a natural inclination to want to know where these officers left, where did they go to, why did they leave. This just shows a breakdown of some of the different agencies that those officers went to, and the salaries associated with that. As you'll see, that a number of the officers stayed within Muskogee County. Some of them were interdepartmental transfers, transferring to the sheriff's office, to the marshal's office. Some of them stayed within Muskogee County, as I said, going to Fort Benning, to Columbus State University, and to La Grange, while others went to a lot of other places, in Georgia, in Florida, in Alabama, you'll see there. Now, this is one of those slides, and there will be a number of these, that's come, do us a comparison of the salary and benefits information. We wanted to see how Columbus stacked up against other agencies. And we looked at a total of twenty-one agencies in Alabama, Georgia, and Florida. So it's a total of twenty-one agencies, and we compared their salaries, as well as the benefits. And that's what the next several slides will, will show in detail. We went and just looked at the salary comparison as we moved forward. And when we looked at how Columbus compared to those other twenty-one or so agencies in terms of the salary and benefits, Columbus fares well. It is not, certainly is not going to be at the top, but we're not at the bottom. We're in the middle there. So there's certainly room for improvement as we look at other like agencies. These other slides are just additional comparisons of looking at the same data. The last slides here look at the agency comparison in terms of three different things. The population, the number of budgeted officers, and the officer-to-citizen ratio. We looked at the same twenty-one agencies. And Columbus, in terms of the three components that we looked at, Columbus looks most like Augusta, in terms of the population, budgeted officers, and citizen ratio. We look most like Augusta, Montgomery, and Mobile. And again, I know this is a lot of information, but I don't want to try to go through it in great depth to you. I have had another question that was asked, and we are working on a response for that. In terms of the one hundred police officers that was allocated, what percentage of those have we filled and have separated? Where are we there? So we'll, we'll have that information and be able to provide it for you at another time. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
All right. And also to let you all know, as you begin to ask your questions, I will be contacting each of you, whether you want to do it on phone or, or private, I want to run a few ideas by you to adjust police pay, again, similar to what we did before, in using the reallocation of existing funds. And the chief and I have been working on it a while. I want to thank Pam and Rita for their help as well. And I think they've come up with something that is frankly more than the seed of an idea. And I would hope that if we continue to work through it, and it looks as promising as it currently does, to perhaps put it in the budget letter. So I want to get your input as we go forward, looking into these numbers. And I also would want Rita to come back at our fourth Tuesday meeting this month, and present the proposal to council, so we can get some input, you know, four weeks prior to my budget letter, and make any adjustments at that time, so that we have the best proposal possible. Counselor Allen?
Mayor, I was talking with some folks the other day, and they asked me, what's the cost of benefits and employees? I guess, what's the number we use? When we hire somebody, we know what the set salary is, or salary grade. What's the number for, we use to associate?
The number that we use is sixty-five or fifty-six. Cost per, for benefits, what we're using. We have been using fifty-six.
What's the dollar amount that we associate with that? Is it?
It really, it's not a percentage, because the health insurance is a flat amount, and then retirement and FICA is a percentage, so it's.
What do we use to, when we compile our budget? What, what do we, what number do we use? We used to use fifty-eight hundred dollars, if I remember right, years ago.
For health insurance is fifty-six, fifty. And then we'll have a percentage for FICA, which is seven point six-five percent, and life insurance is point five percent. And retirement depends on whether you're general government or public safety, and it ranges from sixteen percent to twenty-two percent of salary.
So it's different based on salary, but the? Pam? The, the insurance amount is, is the same for all. But then when you calculate all of the other benefits, it's based on pay, and you can give the percentage for FICA and all that other stuff.
Yes.
And then the value of the sick leave, and the value of vacation time, is based on their pay. So can we do some examples?
Sure.
And just of different pay?
That'd be fine. And there's no rush on it.
Yeah, yeah, some, you know?
Different.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it would be good for recruiting, too, to be able to tell someone your salary is X, and the value of your benefits would be eight thousand dollars, or whatever. Yeah. Okay, let's see, we have Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. And in an effort to just provoke some thought here, I think, I think there's always been a concern, from what I've heard, that we train officers, and then they turn around and go in different directions. And that's always been somewhat of a, a problem, even though it's, you know, it's, it's an open market out there at this point. And I think we'll, in, in, in understanding this, I don't have to remind everybody that we have a need right now. We have a need, and the need happens to be in the police department. And I think from a priority standpoint, providing that nine-one- And I think from a priority standpoint, providing that nine-one-one assistance and, and patrol and, and safety out in the community, I mean, this is something that we really, really have to work at. And it, it's always somewhat concerned me that when officers sign up and they go through the program, that as soon as the training is over, everybody heads in different directions, specifically speaking, intergovernmental. You know, that's, that's a concern. I'm also thinking about, you know, as athletes, when athletes sign on, sometimes they sign multi-year contracts. Not so sure that you can do that here, and I'm, I really don't understand the laws in that area to tell you what you can and can't do, but it seems like if someone signs up for, for a task, that possibility that you can somewhat get your money's worth out of them, or at least they'll stay around for a period of time and fill the need within your community. I, I'm not so sure on what can and can't be done there, but I think within our government, that if we have a need in a specific area, that we need to start thinking of ways, creative ways, that we can deal with that need and to solve that issue, that's there, and to keep, for lack of a better term, to keep the competitiveness within our government out of it. It shouldn't be there, because you've got one department that's training everybody for their need and to meet the need, a specific task that we're falling short in, but yet they tend to go in a different direction. And often it's because it's somewhat of a, you know, the hours are different, the, their, their schedules are different, and maybe the task is, might not be so complicated. And I'm not saying that public safety as a whole, that it's, it's a very difficult job, but I think in reference to the police department and nine-one-one response, officers out on the streets, you know, it's, it's a, I think everybody would agree, even public safety, that it's a different job. It's a totally different job. So, Madam Mayor, I don't know if this is in your part of what you've been working through or thinking about, but certainly I think that we need to start having that conversation and maybe trying to understand better ways to, to meet the needs. I don't think it's necessarily pay, although that's a big part of it, but I think that maybe we need to reshift responsibilities and commitments in such a way that we're meeting that need and providing that safety for the citizens that they're requesting.
Good point.
Because it's, I mean, you're just running, you're, it's, you're chasing your tail, just running in circles a lot of times. And I remember there's some years that we lost a lot of officers.
Yeah.
But it's been within the government. They just chose to go to...
Another department that didn't take nine-one-one calls.
An opening comes available, and hey, you know, I'll just go over there. It's, it's, everything's the same. It's equal.
Well, it's actually, the pay's a little bit more.
I'm sorry?
The pay is, is more in the sheriff's department than it is in the police department.
Well, that's what I'm hearing. I think, you know, we're learning that and understanding that.
And that'll be something we can, we can go through, too, and sort of show. I think we had that last time, we had this discussion, so we have some of those numbers. But I think Counselor Davis, that's a great point, and those are things that we're working on, and we'll bring back some suggestions, and if you all have other suggestions, we'll certainly follow up on them. But we do at least want to stop losing our officers, obviously, after we train them, stop losing them to other internal departments, certainly. And we also want to position ourselves to start getting other people's trained officers. Perhaps they have a spouse that was transferred to Columbus and may want to work for the Columbus Police Department. So we want to position ourselves to be able to take advantage of officers that someone else has trained.
Well, and that, you know, it's, it's a very complicated subject, but, I mean, we're in challenging times right now, that I can say, I don't think that I've ever experienced since I've been on, serving the citizens and city government, and I think as well as from the management side. The world's changing, and, and, you know, we're still have to provide the needs to the citizenry. So, you know, there may have to be change that comes along with that, and, and it may not be easy, but I know in the past that there's always been somewhat of a, maybe that, you hear that word parity all the time, a balance across the board, but in challenging times, you may have to think a little bit different to, to meet those needs that we're falling short in right now. So it may have to be, there may be some differences that need to be explored. People are not going to like it. There may be various departments and offices that might not like it, but you get to the point where you have no choice to, to meet those needs and to fill the gaps.
Yeah, good point. Counselor Thomas.
Ms. Hall, two things. One, on the slide that is former officers, where you list the locations of where some of these folks have gone. Excuse me. What is the time period for that? Do you, I mean...
That was over a three-year period.
So at three years, we've had one officer go to Columbus State? Is that what that says?
Yes. And, and again, this is based on the officers that we were able to track where they actually went.
Did we do an exit interview?
The police department does.
Police department does. One of the things that I would, this is very good information, very interesting information. And one of the things that I would suggest to you is that we shared this information with, well, one of the first ones that comes to mind is the FOP. You know, here's what we've compiled, here's, you may want to know this, and other entities that may be interested. There's, there's a lot of misinformation out there. I was told, for example, that one of the reasons that a lot of our officers go to Harris County is the pay's better. Well, not according to this, you know, there must, there may be another reason why we have eight officers who've gone to Harris County, but certainly it's not the starting salary. And so to correct some of those kinds of things that may be out there, and, and I don't know who else that you may need to, to share it with, but I would hope that it would make its rounds, so that people would see what kind of comparison we're talking about, and that things are not quite as dire as sometimes we are told. I know, too, that, one of the things I check every time we get a financial report is how many officers we have that are being paid out of the OLOS. And this time, it's ninety-four. We have ninety-four officers out of the hundred and three that are, hundred and ten that are authorized, I think, you know, and that number goes up and down depending on, you know, that sort of thing. So I just hope that we can do whatever we need to do, be sure that our media folks get this, and maybe it will spark something somewhere to do some kind of a story on what is actually happening according to our, to our survey. Good job.
And Rita, let, maybe we can give it its own, you know, post it on the website somewhere where it has its own link, so we can share it. I think that it starts a good conversation. You know, I, I gotta tell you, I'm surprised that Greenville, South Carolina's starting salary is thirty-five thousand dollars. I mean, Greenville, South Carolina is a very complex, sophisticated city, urban environment. And one of the things we have to think about when we're comparing ourselves to these other communities is that we are a very dense, population-wise, we have a traditional urban core. And, and so it makes, the work of the police department is very intensive here in Columbus, as it is in some of our comparable cities, like Augusta and, and some of the others you've seen in this presentation. And it's unlike some of our more rural neighbors. And so it could be that they're making professional or lifestyle-type choices, where they're not as an intensive police work, not as many nine-one-one calls, that type of thing. But those are, those are good comparisons to make, because I'm, you know, there's many that stick out to me as Counselor Thomas said, Harris County sticks out to me, but the fact that Greenville, South Carolina is so much lower. And then when you show that bar chart, not so much lower, but lower, I should say. And when you show that bar chart, it's also interesting to see who falls below Columbus as well. So, anyway, thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
The final update is non-conforming dumpsters, planning director Rick Jones, and Will Johnson.
Good afternoon. We're going, we're going to go through this, not rapidly, but we're, we're going to touch on some ideas here and so forth. You may recall the end of last, last calendar year, we had a gentleman come forward and complain about an issue by a dumpster in, during the historic district not being enclosed. And he was, he was citing basically the Unified Development Orders of the Area's provision that requires those, even those dumpsters that were in existence prior to two thousand and five, they should also have the enclosures as well. This, this section four point, four point two-one is in the UDO. It does talk about that. It does require that they be screened, they be, they be properly placed, and they can't be in the public right of way. That's what the ordinance calls for today, even for those that were in existence prior to us adopting the UDO back in two thousand and five. It has to be screened on all four sides, it has to have gates, it has to be screened with materials of the same architectural style, basically in terms of that. The screening enclosure has to be kept in good repair, has to be a minimum height of six feet, and the dumpsters are to be placed on a hard surface. And this gives you an idea of what the dumpster should look like. And we will say at this point now that a business that now comes in and requires a commercial dumpster today has to meet all these criteria, no matter what. You can see that, and we'll show you some examples of that in just a second, but they do have to meet all these, all these criteria, particularly the, the idea of screening with the same or like materials of the existing building or proposed building that's going to be built. So it does blend in or comply with the, the area itself. These non-conforming dumpsters we talked about here, talks about the fact that it should be in compliance with regulations. At that time, no, no earlier than eighteen months from the effective date of this UDO, that was back in two thousand and five. And again, it talks about the materials of those being, or using concrete, fieldstone bricks, stucco, or wood, whichever the case may be. They, but the idea was, again, you had to screen those off just like you would any other dumpster in the community. Back in March of two thousand and six, during a work session, we talked about, we had a presentation on the UDO that talked about going into effect on, in April that year. That time, Deputy City Manager Arrington mentioned about, mentioned about the fact about the existing conditions and what we had to meet with the screening of those businesses. Council that time gave us some concerns and feedback about the fact about having to do a rodents and odor, the owner information, the lack of enforcement, eliminating the gate on, on all three sides. Those are some of the comments we heard in terms of actually putting this ordinance into play, about what happens with that. We also had to bring in and confer, of course, with the, the waste industry itself, those folks that actually had to go by and pick up, pick up the dumpster and empty them on a, on a regular basis as well. The referral, that time, from the mayor was to study and bring back a report of the screening of the existing non-conforming. In that timeframe between April and July, the planning department, along with inspection and codes and public works, we did our research, you know, on alternative to the current language in that. We also met with, again, representatives from the, from the waste industry on that, and the alternative language and text was sent to planning advisory from that standpoint. On August, on August second of, of two thousand and six, we came to you and made a presentation about, about the non-conforming dumpsters, with the idea that the, the applicability of what we're talking about would apply to trash areas, dumpsters, recycling bins, compactors, outdoor storage, all of that, that is really visible from a public street. In other words, if you could see the dumpster, it had to meet, our idea, our idea was, had to meet this criteria. We also proposed at that time that it have a minimal screening of three, on, be a screen on three sides, because, again, in terms of trying to accommodate some of these dumpsters in some of these areas, the, the waste facility truck could not get to the dumpster adequately if we had to screen it on all four sides in dealing with that. We talked about, again, about the materials we, we are, we recommended at that time. And then we also were recommending at that time as well that you make sure that the dumpster could clearly was, the front of that dumpster could not be seen from the public street. You had to turn it away from the public view from that standpoint. And we made that effective date of, of June of two thousand and seven, give everybody to come into compliance with that. And then we talked about, again, that, and then we'll talk about, again, if we went to an expansion, what we'd do in terms of how to meet compliance and all that good stuff from that. PAC came back to us when we made that recommendation and basically recommend, rejected the staff proposal amid concerns about some opponents, those folks that had to actually come into compliance with this issue and dealing with it. And then PAC recommended denial of our recommendation back to council. PAC recommended and approved an alternative amendment which said basically that all, all existing non-conforming dumpsters shall be grandfathered in and considered legal. And that's, that's where PAC collected off. In September two thousand and six, we came back to council, made this, made this presentation on our recommendation, planning department's recommendation, basically going back in and screening it on three sides on that. Again, we had numerous individuals come and speak against that proposal, saying they'd like to just leave the non-conforming use as it was and that. Some of the council concerns and opinions we heard were like the civic troublesome areas. We wanted to re-present it again in October of, of that year, undue burden expense, lack of enforcement, bearances are offered, current dumpster maintenance, and then we wanted pictures of dumpsters themselves. At that time, the mayor asked for a, a delay. Counselors asked to hold off on enforcement until another work session can be, could be conducted in October that year. Officially, the council asked a two-month delay, and motion passed at the six-two. And then same council requested that effective party be allowed to speak at the next work session. Dumpster session is not placed on the October work session, for whatever reason, it just never, never materialized, and the second reading was never heard. So we basically went through all this, but we never really reached a, a decision, or a final, final decision, anyway, in terms of that. This is some of the existing conditions we're having to deal with now, today, out there. Which we, we live, this is behind the St. Mary's Road Shopping Center from Matilda Langy. That's on the backside of that little strip center. It sits there. This is back behind Cross Country, but it is, you is, you can see this dumpster from a public street, from a public right of way. So they would, these come to compliance from that standpoint. Same thing about this one at Cross Country as well, just sitting out there really in the middle of the parking lot. This is at a cross-country restaurant, where, again, for the most part, it is sitting out in, it's, it's just sitting out there in the parking lot. It, it's green, but there's no screening or anything else from, from that standpoint. This is something that the more things we run into more, more frequently, more commonly, are existing uses like this, like this, this, these apartment buildings on MLK, where they have nowhere to put a dumpster. There's just, there's just no place for it. So they have to either put on, put on their property, of course, but, again, it's where they can make sure that truck can get to it as well. And those apartments have been out there forever and ever, for the most part, and so they're just having to accommodate as best they know how. This is, this is the one we had complained about, or it's the next one?
It's the next one.
The next one. This is one down in Historic District, this can be seen from Third Avenue. I guess they could close those gates if they wanted to, but for the most part, they, they keep them open because the truck comes sporadically or whenever to make that happen. This is behind St. Elmo Shopping Center from the public right of way. In terms of, again, you can see where the curb line is in the back of those buildings. They don't have a whole lot of space to put a dumpster and promptly maintain it or whatever, if you have to go in there and gate it up and whatnot. This is the one we talked about from the, from the, the gentleman came and complained to us about. This is sitting out there in, in the parking lot. This one, we think could, could be accommodated in terms of providing some, some screening and so forth, if they so desired, but that's, that's where it looks like from that. This is at Linnwood, Linnwood and Thirteenth, from that standpoint, same thing, again, the availability of property and where they could actually put that dumpster and have it, have it serviced, for the most part. This is at, this is down the CRD area itself, from, from Broadway, and you see the dumpster from the back of that side on that. This is down in the Liberty District, again, availability of, of land in some cases, as to where they can put these dumpsters and have them serviced. This is the triangle here at River and, and Manchester, this one just sits out there by itself from that. This is Long Hamilton Road, is another example, from that standpoint. And again, here at Milian Court, where there's a dumpster out here in the back of that, it still, still can be seen from the public right of way, because it's in their, in their parking lots from that. And this is that, this is at Warren Springs and one eighty-five. Just to the right of that little, that little green dumpster, of course, is the interstate itself. So they're right up against the interstate, and not a whole lot of availability, again, within do that. This is out on Armour Road, where the dumpster's sitting pretty much off to the side here, but still it's visible. but still it's visible. For David and veterans. This is the annex. We're, we have, we have screened ours, so we're, we're good in that regard.
Good job.
This is what you're seeing though since, since 2006 with the, with the U D O actually went into play here, what we're requiring. This is what we're seeing. Now, these are dumpsters that have to meet the ordinance that is written today. They have to be, they have to be the same or like materials for the building that's being, the principal building being built. And that's what's happened here from, from that. This is behind the Mo's Southwest Grill out there on, on Willsey. Those gates are open right now, but everything around it is built exactly like the, the building itself. The same thing for, for Carabas out there, in terms of material. This is the Olive Garden. It's designed really to blend in with the building so that you really cannot determine so much where the dumpster actually is and it's not unsightly to the area. This is T G I Fridays. You can see how well that, that is incorporated into that building itself. The shops at Bradley, same thing. Based on everything that we're talking about, we, we still feel like if we, if we want to go forward with this and deal, and deal with those non-conforming dumpsters, we go back to our original recommendation back in 2006, which is basically maintain those three sides and, and direct it away from the public view, if we want to go that route. And that's where, that's where we want to stand with that, and that's where our recommendation is to back to you today. I'm just not sure that if you ask everybody to fully, fully agree to, to going in and, and closing on all four sides and doing everything else like you would do with a new business, that we're going to get a whole lot of compliance in that. We're going to have a whole lot of, of aggravation, really. But we do think that we, the very least we need to do is at least screen it off on three sides.
Okay. We've got Counselor Henderson.
Rick, yeah, I don't disagree. I kind of like the idea you did when you brought it. It's just really hard to implement with some of these folks. But there were a few up there that it really looked like they just didn't have any ability. They didn't have any space. And, and some of them were even on the right of way. I mean, what, what, what would be the contingency for that? You just mandate that they fix it? Or do, do we try to do variances?
I, I think, if, if you go forth with our, our recommendation, I think what we're going to find out is, we're going to have those, like you say, that cannot comply.
Right.
And then that would have to actually be taken to B Z A for hardship case in that, in that regard. How many of those we're going to have? I couldn't say. But I think, I think we're going to see a, a real jump in that number if we, when we go through this process. So it's, it's just something we got to deal with from that standpoint.
And I, I guess my, my thought is, is that we would move forward in a way that Director Jones is talking about. But if there is just, I mean, we got to be reasonable and accommodating. And if, if they simply can't comply because of situations that we saw on the screen, then they would go through a process to get a variance. And I don't know necessarily that because we're looking back and not forward, that, that we should charge them for the variance process when we know they can't comply. And we're telling them, but you got to have something documented from us as a variance. But with the naked eye, we see that you can't comply. And so we would be asking them to go through a variance process that if they don't get it, then there, there's something drastic is going to happen. And so we just, we look forward and not back. But if, 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 if we know that they've got the space and property needed, that they can do it without a variance, then they got to do it, would be my thought.
All right. We have Counselor Thomas. Oh, excuse me, Counselor Hough.
Yes. Will there be any meetings? Can we set meetings to meet with the business community to discuss it?
We can have those, Counselor, if, if so desired. We have not really got that far in our thought process. Of course, I know the next step would be to actually run through the normal, normal process in dealing with any type of change to the U D O. But we certainly can, at the same time, could, could provide some, some public meetings or whatever, or at least reach out to these folks again, particularly not only the, the business owners that have to run these, these, deal with these dumpsters, but the companies that have to service them as well. Make sure they understand what we're trying to achieve here. And so, yes, we'd have to go through that process and make this work, though.
Okay. Because the city manager was mentioning variances and things of that nature. All that could be kind of hashed out with some of those meetings. Okay. Thank you.
All right. We have Counselor Barnes.
I believe we're going in the right direction on this here. But as the city manager said, I think that because we are moving forward, that we do have something in place. Because they're going, there's obviously, just some, looking at some of the pictures that we saw, it's going to be imposed an extreme hardship on some of those businesses. And being that we are moving forward, I do like your, your recommendation for us to maybe play it by ear or try to work something out. If we can see that individuals can, then we insist on them making a change. But then you have to keep in mind the businesses that are, that have been operating under this here, to be a little bit reasonable. If we can see and, and work with them and see that they cannot affect change, that we kind of work with it. I like what you're saying, Isaiah, in that regards. Because that's, I think that's being reasonable.
Okay.
Well, we'll start moving the process forward, set up meetings and, but I guess we'll have to get your concurrence before we go to the meeting related to variance, you know, whether we can waive the fee. And if they have the, the space to do it, then we require that they do it so that we can have all that settled by the time we start having these meetings. So we might have to come back to you and at least talk about variances before we start having meetings. So we'll do that. Madam Mayor, that concludes my agenda for today.
Okay. All right. That will put us into the Clerk's agenda. Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor and members of council, on the Clerk's agenda have several items of information. Item one is a memorandum from me advising of upcoming board vacancies. Items two through six are biographical sketches of individuals that are nominated or would like to be nominated for our boards. Item seven is a certificate of a need application from St. Francis Health LLC. They want to establish a new special purpose megavoltage radiation service. Items eight through 10 are temporary street closing applications for various events throughout the city. Has already been approved by the Police Department. It's just for the council's information.
We've got a motion and a second that our minutes be received. All those in favor, please state aye.
On our board appointments, on the Civic Center Advisory Board, Council District One, Mr. Walter Lewis is not eligible to succeed himself. Will need another replacement. I'm, Counselor Barnes. On this, for District Two, Mr. James Wilkoff has been nominated to serve on another board. District Seven, Mr. Jim Irving will need a nominee for, from Council District Seven. On a circle commission.
Okay. We've got Counselor Davis.
Madam Clerk, for District Two, Civic Center Advisory Board.
Yes.
I think I gave you Alton Russell last week, last meeting.
Okay. He can be confirmed because it's a district.
We've got a motion and second for confirmation. All those in favor, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Counselor Davis, would you restate the?
Alton Russell for District Two.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for confirmation. All those in favor, please state aye.
On our circle commission, we still need nominees for these two seats that were declared vacant a couple of months ago. On our Community Development Advisory Council, Mayor is nominating Ms. Tricia Levin. She can be confirmed.
Yeah. Lou Ellen, there's a motion and second for confirmation. All those in favor, please state aye.
District Two, Mr. Jack Hayes, he is not eligible to succeed himself, as well as Ms. Gladys Ford, who represents District Four. District Eight, Ms. Shaheed is not interested in serving again, as well as Mr. Colin Martin, who represented District Nine. On our Crime Prevention Board, Mr. Joseph LaBranche, Mayor's nominee for Fort Benin Liaison, can be confirmed.
A motion and second for approval. All those in favor, please state aye.
On our Development Authority, we've outlined these three seats. Mr. William Taylor, I understand he does not want to, to serve again. And then Mr. Heath Shonda Meyer has been nominated for Stella Bohoak's seat, as well as Mr. Fernando Rodriguez. Now, Mr. Shonda Meyer was nominated at a previous meeting, so he can be confirmed.
Okay. We've got a motion and second for approval. All those in favor, please state aye. Counselor Henderson, did you have something?
I did. I had a nominee for Mr. Taylor's seat, Jason Cuevas. I'll get his bio to you. He's the head of George Power here locally.
And I know that Mayor Protem want to nominate Mr. Douglas. Mayor Protem, did you say for which seat?
Madam Clerk, I think I gave you a letter from Carmen Cavaeza requesting that he's got other matters they'd like to take care of. So he will be resigning.
That is correct.
And I do know Alfred Blackmar has, with Aflac, has a desire to serve.
Okay.
If you could get him a bio, I appreciate it.
I will. On our Employees' Benefits Committee, we've outlined the seats that are coming up. Mr. Michael Burgess, a general government employee, he does not want to continue to serve. Mr. Lionel Hayes.
We have Counselor Thomas.
I'm wondering, Ms. Washington, if you could remind us, maybe between now and our next meeting when we vote on some of these, didn't we put some requirements on some of these positions that we wanted certain groups represented or something? Did, do I, am I remembering the right committee?
Are you talking about the employees?
The Employee Benefits Committee.
The Employee Benefits Committee, that, that there should be representatives of cer- would you, would you get that to us so that we could make sure that as we are looking at potential nominees, that we have that in mind?
It may be, and, and do Tiny, it may be that's what this is, general government employee, general government employee, department director, assistant director, so and so forth.
Well, I, I just want to make sure that, if we could, just send it to us and let us to remind it.
I'll send that out to you, Counselor Thomas.
Thank you.
Then on our Historic and Architect-
Could we nominate Lionel Haynes and Seth Brown?
Okay. Okay. Are there any, any others who, who would like to renominate?
Okay. We can move for confirmation on Mr. Hayes and Mr. Seth Brown. And second, all those in favor, please state aye. Okay.
Want to move confirmation?
Do we move for confirmation? Yeah. Oh, excuse me. Yes.
That's why I asked for some clarification to make sure that, that when we nominate these folks, we're nominating and we're, we're doing the right category and all of those kinds of things. And if you're telling me that what's on here is the, the proper category with the proper numbers, that, that's okay. But.
Counsel, Counselor Thomas, I do believe that the agenda as outlined is correct and that these individuals are serving in these specific capacity.
And if they're nominated today, they can be confirmed today?
Yes. Excuse me. They can. But if the council desires to wait one week, we can hold off until next, to our next regular meeting.
I think we've had a, a few already approved.
Right.
And we don't have a, a motion on the floor for the others. Go ahead, Tiny, if you have additional information.
Yeah, we do have the data sheet and the qualifications of the member states that the five members appointed by the council shall consist of one sworn officer from any public safety department, two members chosen from general government employees, and two department directors or assistant directors. The director of human resources or his or her designee shall be an ex officio member of the committee. The public safety appointee shall serve for terms of two years. The general government and department director appointee shall serve for terms of three years. All appointees shall be eligible to serve two consecutive full terms.
How many general government officials?
Yes.
Three positions.
Okay. Would you like to hold off or should we move forward?
Well, we've got, we've got Haynes and, excuse me, Haynes and Brown have been, have been confirmed. But we can certainly hold off on Burgess and, well, and, excuse me, Burgess we're looking for, and, and Drill Short, until we can understand better what their positions were. Counselor Barnes?
No, that's what I was going to suggest. Because I do remember in conversation when we had everybody sitting out here, when we first started talking about that, you're right, we were talking about we needed to have our represent, adequate representation from all the departments in this here. And I feel more comfortable if, I know that you read it, that's, that's good. But I just want to be sure that we are not-
If you like, I can let you know who those members are. Captain James Pope, who represents the Columbus Police Department, is a sworn officer from the Public Safety Department. Division Chief Marie Harrell represents the Fire and EMS Department. Mr. Michael Burgess, of course, he represents the general government employees, as well as Mr. Lionel Haynes with the Finance Department and represents the general government employees. Mr. Seth Brown, who is the department director. Ms. Sandra Hunter is the department director. Ms. Drill Short was selected by the general government employees. And our director, Rita Hollowell, is an ex officio member and is a director. Ms. Pamela Hodge, Finance Director, also serves as the ex officio member.
Okay. Well, it sounds like at least one of those was elected. So do we have to send it back to the employees to elect again, I guess, as before? That's one thing we need to-
That would be, yes.
Let's check on that. Okay. How about?
We just hold on to that position.
Yeah. How about?
We need to rescind our vote.
Yeah.
We need to pull it out, okay.
Yeah.
Who are you pulling at?
I think Haynes and Brown are probably okay, but it's council's prerogative if somebody wants to, you know, motion to-
I thought you said that she was tan-pick. She could respond.
Elected.
And that is correct.
No, we haven't. We haven't approved.
There hasn't been a vote.
No, but there, but there wasn't a vote on it.
There was no vote taken. You did make a motion, Counselor Allen, but no vote has been taken.
Okay. So unless, where we are now, let's go ahead and move forward because we're, we're near the finish line here. We have approved Haynes and Seth Brown, Lionel Haynes and Seth Brown. That appears to be good. But if there's a motion to rescind that, we can certainly have it. Otherwise, we'll move forward in getting the clarification on the others. So we'll leave the floor open for a moment if somebody'd like to rescind that or?
I don't want to send them, but next week when it comes back, if this position is elected among the employees, we need to state that on the sheet.
Yeah. It'll come back corrected. Drill was elected at, at the first time around. Now we just need to see if it needs to go back to the general government employees for election.
We will check that, Madam Mayor. And we will bring it back at a regularly scheduled meeting, not at the special call meeting on next week. On our Historic and Architectural Review Board, our Historic District resident has resigned, Ms. Rebecca Antribius. resigned, Ms. Rebecca Antrimius. We will need another nominee for that seat. On our Personal Review Board, Mr. Ron Mahoney is now deceased. Will need a nominee for that seat. Recreation Advisory Board, I know that councillor Woodson is working on a recommendation for her District Seven seat, as well as District Eight. Taxicab Commission, on our Taxicab Driver Representative, we are still working, trying very hard to get a replacement. On the Tree Board, we received recommendations for Mr. Chris Coakley's seat of Mr. Brad Huff, as well as Ms. Cassie Renfro for Mr. Steve Smith's seat, if council would like to nominate these individuals. Yes, I'll bring them back at our next regularly scheduled meeting. On our Uptown Facade Board, we received a recommendation from Uptown Columbus of Mr. Allen U.D.
Got a motion and second for confirmation. All those in favor, please state aye.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. I believe we had a request from the, excuse me, we've got councillor Huff.
Yes, Madam Mayor. We had some confusion during the last election cycle. So if you would, if it's possible, could we get Ms. Nancy Bourne to come fourth Tuesday or first Tuesday next month, whenever's convenient for her, to kind of update us and let us know? And I'll get in contact with her prior to-
Precincts, you mean? Some precinct questions? Okay, let's do that. And Mr. City Manager, do you want to extend an invitation to Mrs. Bourne for that?
And is it possible to put her on your agenda so she won't have to stay all day? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Let's see, we have councillor Barnes.
Just to remind the council and the viewing audience that at the Civic Center this weekend, it's the Stimulate. This is exciting. Columbus makes it along with Let's Grow Steam. It's an effort to encourage, and it's going to be huge, I believe, all the young people for the steam, the science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. It's just going to be a phenomenal get-together. It's going to be held at the Civic Center along with the ice rink, and it is free to the public. So I'd like to encourage everyone to come out and bring all the, our young folks, to encourage their interest in the robotics that's going to be there and all the phenomenal things. So that's this coming weekend, and it is free to the public.
Thank you. Let's see, we have councillor Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I forgot, I got a call late last night, and there's a, at the corner of Piper and Perry. We've talked about the fact that there's an open ditch, and the water kind of stands there, and the kids, apparently it's a bus stop, they stand right there. And the lady that lives right there asked if we could get the health department somebody to spray, because of the mosquitoes, even though it's early in the season, they're already out there, and if it's, they were bad last year, so if there's any way to put it on a regular rotation, just go by and hit that and try to hold it down for the kids that are standing by the bus stop. It's right by Home Depot, I think.
Yeah, I called that in.
Yeah.
That's horrible.
Councillor Davis, we'll have that a referral, Mr. City Manager, as well to call it in to the health department. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. City Manager, could you, maybe you already know, I don't know or not, but I know that the American Little League season has started, and that means it's about that time of the year, you're going to have a lot of concerns with traffic and pedestrians and all. I'm not sure where, I know the city was working on some measures to provide safety, more safety there in the crossings. We're going to probably all start receiving phone calls here soon. I don't know where the city's at on that yet, but there was also a request for a handicap ramp at one of the facilities. They said there was no way for people in wheelchairs to be able to get down to watch the kids play. Now, I don't know where that's at either, but could you check on that for me, maybe?
I'll have to check on that.
Maybe just shoot me an email, whatever, and give me an update on that, or just a plan of action?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. We had a request from the city attorney for an executive session on property acquisition disposition and litigation update. We've got a motion from the Mayor Protem that we go into executive session in a second. All those in favor, please state aye. All right. We are up and running again. We have just exited an executive session on property acquisition and disposition and also litigation, and no votes were taken. So at this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion second, all those in favor, please state aye. Great, we will see you next Tuesday morning at nine. Thank you all.